The Wednesday morning session of the Kansas State Board of Education is now called to order. We, the, it appears that we have nine members present. I anticipate all will be here shortly. Yesterday, we received information from Commissioner Watson about the opportunity to increase the true up amount for school districts. Today, we will act on that recommendation after the S R two expenditure plans. Are there any other changes to today's agenda? And if not, a motion will be in order to approve the agenda. Deana Horst makes that motion. Ben Jones seconds that motion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That is a nine zero vote. One of the, as, one of the things that is the most exciting for us is to hear from students. And we have another great opportunity this morning, and I call on Denise to make the introductions. Welcome Denise.
Now it is. All right. Good morning. I'm Denise Kaler. I'm the Director of Communications here, the State Department of Ed. So we always love to bring students before you who are just really shining examples in our education system. And today we have a really extraordinary young woman. Her name is Jackie Ortega. She will be a senior at Highland Park High School this fall, correct? Oh my. And part of why we wanted to bring Jackie here this morning is she did a really incredible project, school project. And it really exemplifies how social emotional growth is and curriculum is being embedded into our schools. And I think she's an exceptional example of that. In addition to that, and Jackie, I'm going to put you on the spot just a little bit. We're going to have you talk about your program. But I also want you to know a couple of things about Jackie. Because I think this would really feed into the conversation. We'd love to know kind of how you balance everything. Jackie enjoys spending time with five of her, she has five siblings that she spends time with. I believe that you had been working twenty to thirty hours a week during the school year. Let's see, what else do I know about you? You're in Theater and Choir. You also are a cheerleader. And as my understanding, you're going to be school president next year. Is that correct? So I don't know about you all, but she's juggling a little more than most of us would be. So Jackie, before you come up and present, Dr. Tiffany Anderson, Superintendent of USD 501 is here. And Dr. Anderson, would you like to introduce all of your folks that are here with you today?
Absolutely. We are so proud of Ms. Ortega. She's on my student superintendent's council and is actually quite quiet there. So she's a quiet, strong leader that exemplifies what balance looks like. With that, with Ms. Ortega, she has both of her assistant principals. Mrs. Giardina, who is to my far right. Mrs. Norbury is her other assistant principal. Additionally, Dr. Gray, our Director of Instructional Services. Ms. Ortega, I told her to start off with just sharing a little bit about who she is. Because she represents the highest free lunch population at Highland Park High School. Highest minority population at Highland Park High School. And she has been quite the voice and advocate for her, for her peers. I'll turn it back over to the person of the hour.
Jackie, come on up. Did, were you, you're set up with everything you need?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Hello. Said I'm Jackie Ortega. I'm going to be a senior at Highland Park High School. A little more about myself. I'm also in the band. I'll be the drum major this year. So it's really exciting. Yeah, and I'm really excited to get to share more about my school and mental health. Because I think it's really important that we talk about it and we get more, more focus on students' mental health. And mental health in general in our community. So, yeah, I'll show my video real quick. I'm going around the school, finding things to film that I find beautiful. Oh, don't say that. Stop. And I think you're really beautiful, so. I love it. Filming things I find beautiful. Yeah, you're, you're very beautiful. Oh, oh my gosh. You're very beautiful, so, thank you. And I think you're very beautiful. On the school, finding things that I find beautiful. And filming them. So I think you guys are very beautiful. Thank you. And I think you're beautiful. That you find what? Beautiful.
Oh my God. Oh my God.
And you're very beautiful.
Oh my God.
You're beautiful.
I think you're very beautiful, so. Things I find beautiful. And, you're very beautiful. I think you're very beautiful. Thank you. And you're very beautiful. Oh, Jackie. Things I find beautiful. And I think you're very beautiful, Morgan.
Thank you.
Filming things I find beautiful. And you're very beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're very beautiful.
That's beautiful.
Recording things in the school that I find beautiful.
Oh.
Get out of here. Get out of here.
I'm just going around the school, finding things to film that I find beautiful. And I think you're very beautiful. Oh. Oh my gosh, really? Oh no, I'm gonna cry. You're very beautiful, dude. I'm going around the school, finding things to film that I think are beautiful. Bye. You're both very beautiful. So basically, I'm just going around the school, finding things to film that I find beautiful. And I think you're really beautiful. Thank you. I'm going around the school, finding things to film that I find beautiful.
You're pretty gorgeous.
Come back. You're very beautiful, Sherman.
I guess.
You're very beautiful.
The drawing's cooler though.
I think you're very cool.
And the drawing looks better.
I beg to differ. I think you're pretty cool.
Apparently you did not see the drawing.
You're beautiful. I'm going around the school, filming people I find beautiful. And I think you're very beautiful, so.
You guys are making me laugh.
You're very beautiful. Going around the school, filming things I find beautiful. You're very beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
You're very beautiful.
Thank you.
You're very beautiful, man. You're, you're very beautiful.
Thanks.
Filming things I find beautiful. And, no, come back. You're beautiful, so. I think you're very beautiful. And I think you're very beautiful. And I think you're very beautiful. So, you're very, very beautiful. You're both very beautiful. We're beautiful. No, you're not dead. You're beautiful. Basically, I'm just going around the school, filming things I find beautiful.
And you sexy. So it is. All right, bro.
All right. So as you can see in that video, we got a lot of different reactions. We had some people who, like, most of these people I didn't know. I actually made quite a few friends making this video. We had some people who just nervously laughed, others who said thank you. And then there's some people who were just like, no, I'm not. And I think it's, it was really interesting to see all the different reactions and how people, you know, just see themselves. I think it's really important that sometimes we just slow down and, you know, even like the smallest compliment or small gesture can make someone's day. So I think something that really inspired this video was, there was actually a video on YouTube that I had seen that was similar. And I, like, I knew that I had to do it at Highland Park. So I talked to my, my yearbook teacher, because we do monthly reports, whether it be like an article about something that's going on in school or pictures of something. And I decided to do this video and it was, I originally thought it was just going to be like for a grade. It's gonna do this video and then get it over with. And then we posted it and it immediately started getting a lot of likes and a lot of shares. And I was really excited that finally people were seeing, you know, Highland Park for who we really are. We are a beautiful school and I feel like we've gotten a bad rep in the past because of like where we're located. But we're finally getting to show people the beauty of Highland Park. So, yeah. Oh, so after high school, I want to study psychology and music. KU has a music therapy program that I've been looking into. And I would like to study there the following fall of 2022. So, yeah.
Well, as one old drum major to a new drum major, congratulations.
Thank you. I play the flute, but I also play seven other instruments, or six other instruments. I.
That doesn't appear to be a shock to anybody.
I, yeah, I play the flute in the band and sometimes I'll switch to piccolo. But I started with the violin and I play the guitar and the piano and the ukulele. So, yeah.
Betty.
Well, I certainly enjoyed your video. And I'd like just a little bit of information because you were affirming each other. And I could see the impact that it was having on your fellow students. Tell me a little bit of thought that went into using that particular affirmation for your fellow students.
Well, the word beautiful, I feel like most people see it as like a feminine thing or it's like something you don't really say to men. But I feel like the word can be used for like anybody. And going into it, I was really nervous because I had never made a video before. And so using the word beautiful, I felt like it was the perfect word to describe the students at Highland Park and just anybody in general, whether it be inner beauty or beauty on the outside. So.
So did you notice a, a different kind of reaction as you encountered them after the video?
Yeah, there was some students who like came back and told me like, you know, nobody had ever called me beautiful before or that made my day. And so I was really happy to see the impact the video had made on people.
Well, I have to share with you, just in watching your video, I kind of vacillated with the emotions of laughing and, and maybe feeling a little teary. I think it was absolutely great. And thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie.
Hi Jackie.
Hello.
You are beautiful.
Thank you. So are you.
Thank you. I love that it encourages people to be accepting of a compliment. That was one of the things, I watched your video several weeks ago. And I just want to share with you how much fun I think it is to watch other people watch your video. My girls are twelve and fourteen. And I sent it to them and they pulled it up on the kitchen computer. And it was a delight to watch them go through the different emotions and watching the way that people reacted. And it's hard not to watch it and think, you know, how would people react if I said this to them? My question for you, I'm curious, you did this during COVID. We see a lot of masks in the video, right? Can you just give us a little bit more background on kind of what your thought process was and why you chose this at a time when you really couldn't see people?
Well, if you like look at the video, you can see their eyes. And that's something I didn't really take into account before making the video. But as I was like editing and going through all the clips, you can see people's eyes light up. And so I feel like people can show happiness and different expressions through every part of their face. And just like the shrugging of the shoulders. Even with masks, I feel like we can really, you know, just see the happiness that comes out of people and just like body language in general. Yep.
I love it. You've done some very important work here. Thank you so much for sharing.
Anne.
Jackie, I just want to thank you for coming. It was, it was a beautiful film. And, you know, the inside and the diversity that you were able to display was incredible. I don't know what else you have in mind, but I think you have a future as a filmmaker. You should submit this to the Oscars in the documentary, short documentary category. But, and usually, you know, somebody say, well, that's my school and my girl. But I'm not going to do that because there's nothing I did that made any of this happen. Most of us, you know, there's nothing we, we really do. So you're all welcome to claim Jackie. She's our girl and Highland Park is our high school. So thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that, that you never know is what, you know, we, you don't know the background of most of those people that you told were beautiful. But there's going to be significant benefit for that. You may have saved somebody's life. It's that significant. And I, and I think that we need to look. It's that significant, and I, and I think that we need to look at what you have done as being that significant. Uh, and that is so appreciative.
Thank you.
I would hope that, uh, that, that, I asked Dr. Anderson, I'd like to follow up in 10 years to see where Jackie is, because I think that it's gonna be, uh, someplace well above, uh, what, uh, what... Well, I think our expectations are very high, because you've proven to be a, a great person with a great future.
Thank you.
And what you're going, what I, what I perceive you're going to do is you're gonna make a difference in people's lives. You already have, uh, obviously, you already have, and that is so appreciative and so needed in this world today. You are not only beautiful, but you're great.
Thank you. You are beautiful as well.
And we will look forward to following you, uh, as you continue to rise. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we're, Dr. Tiffany Anderson's gonna say just a couple of things.
So our social-emotional curriculum, as Jackie kicked off so well, her video led to two things that you should be aware of, just within the state of Kansas. We, about four years ago, uh, really, um, brought in CI3T across our entire district. So we have a full trauma-informed approach, uh, throughout the district. So our social-emotional curriculum, K-12, is in place. We also put in place mental health screenings. And so students who feel they're not seen or heard or connected, when they register for school, we do eye exams and ear exams. Why can't we do a mental health exam? So we picked the ACES survey. And about three years ago, I, I chair, co-chair, the Mental Health Committee for Topeka Public Schools. And about three years ago, I just took three questions and just put them on the registration form. And they're from the ACES survey. So things like, "Have you had someone close to you die?", you know, since school was out? Anyway, if you say yes to those three, then it constitutes an immediate counseling session to make sure that students begin seeing themselves as students and scholars and young people with hope and possibility. That one screener has made it so that in the last three years, we have not had a student suicide, which, if you know of the suicide rate in Kansas, it is one of the, uh, top three, uh, ways in which adolescents die in Kansas, is suicide at least five years ago. Five years ago, myself and all districts around me also had student suicides. So it's not a Topeka thing or, or a thing for one county. We have not had a student suicide in the last three years, which was when that survey was put on the registration form. There's now a youth suicide, uh, commission in place, and all of our students across the county and my neighboring districts with my colleagues, those students are on that commission as well, and, and they meet and they talk about these issues in mental health. Jackie, in particular, is on my student superintendent's advisory. So the other piece is getting student voice, uh, which has really helped shape what we do in mental health for me. You can't serve needs you don't know. So, how do we know the needs? Literally, every month, uh, those students come together. That's how we did our reopening plan. That's how some of the things that we did or were put in place as policies. We determined how best would we help students work through things like wearing masks during athletics. How do you play basketball with masks, you know? So talking to students about how do we make these things work that are, that are realities that we have to deal with, whether we like the realities or not. Uh, but also, what are mental health things? So we have music therapy, art therapy, animal therapy. We have 14 animal therapy dogs in our schools. We have below the national, um, ratio for counselors, which is 200 to 1. We have a ratio below that. So every school has a full mental health team, counselors, social workers, uh, school psychs, as a team that wraps around supports around our students. Uh, in the case of Highland Park, uh, if I leave anything out, since Jackie's video, we have started a student, paid student, she doesn't know this part, intern. So our current intern, which, um, who is from Highland Park, Riley Atkinson-McLaurie, will go to college, uh, in, uh, a few weeks. Um, and she's been with us, uh, a month. And so we open up the applications, and, uh, actually, our staff member, Mr. Garrett, is starting a podcast with Student Voices. And students like Jackie will have the opportunity. Tomorrow, the principals get the application to apply for a paid student internship for videography, uh, and really just for student broadcasting. A lot of that and those ideas, in part, came from that video. And just how do you create and ensure that that career pathway is very finely in place? So the current student intern is a communications major. Unfortunately, she's leaving Kansas. But she'll come back for the job. As she right now, she also is a student of color who works three jobs, who is a 4.0 Topeka High student, going into communications. And we're excited to have her, single-parent household. Mom works three jobs. It's a pretty amazing kids that are doing some incredible things, but with great social-emotional health support. Wanted just to let you know, kind of a little background about not just Highland Park, but what you're allowing to happen by just your support and, um, continued, uh, movement in terms of mental health. So thank you for that. And most importantly, thank you for having Jackie here and highlighting her and letting her know how beautiful she is.
Thank you. And you're not off the hook yet, Dr. Anderson. And, and Ma has a question.
Yes, just one. Dr. Anderson, thank you for that. Well, yesterday, we approved the Mental Health Intervention Team Program Grants, and I noticed Topeka gets more than $600,000. Can you tell the board, because a lot of times we approve these things and don't really know the impact, how much that money has helped what you guys are doing?
Oh, my goodness. So I just shared several of the pieces that we have in place, and of course, our principals return tomorrow. So our mental health teams, uh, really have, uh, the reopening, um, right now reopening for COVID, but really reopening for COVID and reopening for the year. When you talk about social-emotional health, it's tied hand in hand. So as we have these, um, added resources, we're able to really talk about how do you personalize learning and have great social-emotional experiences? And so they've ranged from things like, even this summer, we had social-emotional camp. You may have never heard of that, but really, having students involved in that regard. Well, school is the same way. So we're creating, um, these check-and-connect opportunities for young people. Uh, we have, again, as I mentioned, our animal therapy, music therapy, art therapy spaces. We have a mental health clinic, which, uh, was highlighted by Education Week. It's one of the, I think, probably few in the nation. Uh, French actually started it four years ago. Uh, a mental health clinic in each one of the schools, where students can actually, uh, leave and go to a space and just, uh, diffuse themselves. And they have, uh, sensory rooms in some of our elementary schools. They all have neat names to them, but ultimately, they're spaces where young people can go and have, um, space and time. We also have that in place for staff as well, um, mental health spaces within schools as well. Um, and that's separate from the, um, you know, the corners that are in the classrooms that many schools do have, for students to, you know, have a, a peace corner or a mindfulness space in a classroom. This is a separate space. So, you know, at one time, you know, you may have students that, um, are sent out of the class, and they, um, go to the office, or they go to a dean's space. We literally have, um, educated our students how to know that your heart rate is getting up there. We incorporated in our PE classes and how, how your heart rate is getting up there, and you may need to step out, go to a space. And we have all kinds of sensory things to help you regulate, because as adults, they have to know how to self-regulate, and, and we teach them that. So the funds that you're giving feed all of those and far more than what I can speak about here. If you ever wanna visit any one of these spaces, or you wanna see, what does a sensory room look like? We are so fortunate, I in Kansas, that universities like Washburn, they give us, uh, what, 11 or 12 social work interns? And, you know, it's not costing us added staff, but we have a number of people just partnering with us that, um, help man some of these, uh, spaces for us. And then, of course, students like Jackie, who just bring voice to the table to say, "What if we did this?". Here's what I do know, that in schools, particularly urban schools, when you have budget issues, you know, often you, you know, cut things like fine arts and... But what we know, what you just heard from Jackie, even though she works jo, you know, her job and her family works multiple jobs and all of these other things, all those are outlets. Music is its own language, arts, athletics. So we make sure that we have many avenues, but we embed the social-emotional curriculum through all of them. So in art class, in PE class, you'll see that embedded. I know you all have a full agenda, but are there other questions for me or for Jackie?
First of all, we don't worry about the time, because this is the most important thing we do. So we're, so we'll take all the time that's necessary. But Betty, go ahead.
Dr. Anderson, thank you. I remember meeting you many, many years ago when you decided to make the move to Kansas. And I'm so thankful that you did, because you are such an innovative person. All of this is in existence because of good leadership. So I compliment you on that, and I thank you for the things that, uh, that you're highlighting and doing, and I'm looking forward to seeing more of this from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, with our administrators here, and Ms. Giardina has been with the district for some time. Um, Highland Park, five years ago, had a 30, 30, 40% graduation rate. They now have approximately, is it 70% for this year? Well, teetering on 70%, still lower than the other districts, uh, than the other schools. The other schools have now hit in above 90. But, uh, knowing that that 30% jump, um, I attribute to addressing social-emotional health and academics, uh, and, uh, good assessments. But making sure, we meet kids where they are and address those basic needs first. Uh, it's made a tremendous difference. And then the social-emotional health is also embedded in the Topeka Rescue Mission, which serves a lot of our, you know, a, a number of our families. And, uh, they have a training, um, our staff goes there. So that just cooperation all the way around, so it's really a full-service piece. Thank you for sharing that. Are there other questions for myself or for Jackie?
I don't see any right now, but thank you, thank you for being here. And Jackie, you are a star. Uh, and, uh, and we are so excited about you and wish you the best, uh, as you, as you move into the future.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. And now... It's your turn, Doug. We won't make you wait. This today, like we did yesterday.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I guess I stand for questions at this point. If there are any, and if not, I'll step out of your way and let you do your business.
Are there questions? If, if, is, is it appropriate now for either questions or a motion? Ben.
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education accept the recommendations of the Commissioner's Task Force on ESAR and ENS, distribution of money, and approve the submission of district, school district expenditure plans for ESAR II, federal COVID-19 relief funds as presented.
And is there a second to that motion, Betty? Seconds to that motion? Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries nine to one. There is another motion about the, uh, uh, true-up. Yesterday, the commissioner, uh, visited with us about increasing the true-up from $600 to $625. And so in that case, I will move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the increase of the true-up amount of $600 to $625 per student to utilize the additional ESAR III federal COVID fund relief funds. Is there a second to that motion? Uh, Melanie seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries nine to one. Thank you very much. We appreciate your extensive, uh, explanations this morning. No problem. And now, the most exciting thing we ever do. I think we'll take an hour and a half break.
Wow. It's so timely.
Thank you. I really hoped you were not going to ask me to be as brief as Doug.
I'd ask you, but it wasn't any good.
And if you'll excuse me just a moment. Okay. First, before we start on the matter at hand, I would like to make one introduction. Uh, our, one of our newest members here at the State Department is our Director of School Finance, Dale Brungart. For those who maybe have not met him before, he comes to us from Ellsworth, where he was superintendent of schools for the past six years, if I remember correctly. Principal before that, teacher, uh, coach. Uh, and also, will somewhere in the conversation slip in that he is a proud veteran of the United States Air Force. So with that, anything you'd like to say?
Just look forward to working and serving and, and, uh, helping Kansas kids alongside of, uh, with you.
Thanks. And we are certainly glad to have him here. He will tell you at the moment he's drinking from a fire hose, but I think that describes a lot of us right now. Mr. Chair, I'd, I'd take some direction from you on how you'd like us to proceed on this.
Do you realize how dangerous that is?
Yeah, I, I do, uh, but I'm just gonna throw it out there anyway. Is there a power point here? Oh, okay. We have, uh, the slides that we used last month with some additions based on questions you asked with a little additional information. We can walk through the whole thing, and then you can come back and address what you would like to see funded or not funded. You can make those decisions as we go through. It doesn't matter to us. It's whatever works best for your process.
Go through the entire process and then come back, and we'll take them out of it at a time.
All right. So, for starters. Question was asked about the State General Fund receipts, and you've probably seen in the news, the revenue estimating group, just for a little background, meets twice a year in November and April, and they make revenue estimates, uh, for the governor and the legislature to plan their budget. November estimates are used by the governor, uh, to decide what she'll recommend for her budget. And the April estimates, then, the legislature usually likes to have before they actually approve the budget. They wanna make sure that money's really going to be there. So what you're seeing, and, and I'll give you the short version, and that's the highlighted line. Since the April estimates were announced, uh, revenue and, and the re, April estimates increased November by quite a bit. Uh, revenue was coming in better than anticipated, having come through a pandemic. Since April, estimates have been $758 million higher. I'm sorry, revenues have been $758 million higher than the estimate, just three months ago. Uh, the majority of that, I wanna say $520 million, was in May, which was the time income taxes were due this year. And there were some one-time payments and those kinds of things. So certainly don't expect that kind of an increase to continue every month. Uh, but nevertheless, for the last three months, the state has done well with their revenue and, and does have some money in the account. And for the typical practice, uh, for the state, when they start the new fiscal year in July, um, they borrow money from other funds that the state has, their own funds. They shift them over to the State General Fund, so that they can pay, uh, for programs like state aid to school districts until state revenue rolls in later in the month. This year, for the first time in a long time, they didn't have to do that because of the number you see there, that $758 million. They had enough money in the State General Fund to, to take care of the payments that they make in July. So very positive development. And, uh, just add on the breakout a little bit of that, $90 million of that approximately came in April, uh, and that's the only amount that the legislature knew about before they adjourned. The other $670 million or so has, has occurred since that time.
Are there any estimates about going forward?
Uh, none that have been made, no. They will not meet again until November. Uh, and at that time, I think, obviously, that's not my area of expertise, but I think a number of people assume they'll have to increase estimates at that time based on what they're seeing here. And as I said, some of this is very much one-time money, but nevertheless, there is still more, more revenue coming than expected.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
On that, does that, do we anticipate some decrease? There was a tax bill that passed last session.
Yes.
Is there gonna, do they know what effect that's gonna have on the budget at all for next year?
Short answer is yes. In follow-up, do I know? No.
So we don't know what the dollar value is to it?
Um, I don't. Do you happen to know, John?
Yeah, I don't remember what it was, though.
That sounds right. About $200 million, but that's over two years. Other questions?
Let's go ahead.
Okay. So moving in to budget issues for K-12 education, this is our history of the base for the General Fund. Uh, and we just go back to 2008, 2009, uh, which was when we were in the midst of the national recession, and it followed the Montoy... were in the midst of the national recession, and it followed the Montoy Supreme Court case. The base was forty-four hundred dollars, and you can see after that, it went down for a number of years until we got into the midst of the Gannon Court case, and the legislature agreed on a plan that the Supreme Court agreed would meet the requirements. And they have increased the base and are scheduled to increase the base for another two years, which would make a five-year plan. And it's the first time we've ever had a five-year plan that increases the base to a set amount every year. And then what you don't see there is 2023, 24, the plan provides that the base will increase by the Consumer Price Index. So whatever that percentage increases, the base will continue to increase. We've also never had that before. And you will, many people will tell you that's been part of the issue that's put us in court, is we tend to set a number as the base, and it stays there for three or four years. So by putting the Consumer Price Index, if it stays, the intention was to try and avoid having that happen again. So you can see for the, since seventeen, eighteen, actually, since sixteen, seventeen, we've been growing pretty well. The increases for this coming year, and then in twenty-two, twenty-three, are three percent increase to the base. So if everything else were equal in a district and enrollment stayed flat, their general fund would increase by three percent. Everything else is never equal, but that that gives them a ballpark of where things would start to change budget-wise in in a school district. So options, in the past, the State Board focused on, let's fund the law. That's while we were in the middle of of the Gannon lawsuit. There was a specific base called for in statute. Now that they are, they are truly funding the law, so if your option is to fund the law, there is no additional cost. They are doing that. The law is being funded as agreed to. Supplemental state aid, also known as the local option budget.
Let me interrupt just a second.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna poll the board. Would, when we have things like this, which is gonna be just fund the law and no additional cost, we're gonna have to make a dozen motions, you know, by the time we get through with all this. Would you like to go ahead and deal with these as they come up, or would you like to go back and some, okay. So let's go back to the, to that. That's, that's already anticipated by the legislature to do exactly this, right?
It has already been approved by the legislature that they will provide a base of forty-seven oh six for this coming year, and then in twenty-two, twenty-three, which is the year you're focusing on, forty-eight, forty-six is is already written into the law and has been approved.
Okay, so what does the motion for approval of this need to be?
If you don't want any change, I don't know that you really need a motion. You can make one if you want to be supportive of what's been placed in the law, certainly.
Well, we'll make a total budget recommendation, though, won't we, that would include this? I mean, don't we send them a list?
That, yes, that, one way would be to have all the items you'd like to have funded into one motion. Another would be to deal with each one individually, just those that you would like to see changed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think some, last year, I think we just put in the ones we were concerned about because some of the stuff they funded didn't have anything to do with us. And we said, like, well, if they want to fund it, go ahead. But, you know, we didn't put it in our budget, if that makes sense. Like, I think the five million for security, I don't think we included that in ours. We said, they did it, whatever.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the most efficient way to do this.
I, I would encourage you on things that have been in court and the legislature's done. So base state aid, special ed, those type of things to show some action on, because there's a record of that, then, of whether you want to go above or beyond, or you approve what they've done. When you get to some of the other things that are maybe add-ons, you can pick and choose if, do we want to comment on that or not, but...
Well, you're right, because a lot of people were going back to whatever it was, twenty-seventeen, and saying, does anybody know what they actually recommended? And I go, yeah, here it is. It's in the minutes. They recommended, and the court really paid attention to that. Yeah.
Look at your recommendations.
So a motion to approve the state, the...
The base state aid.
Base state aid for students as presented would be appropriate.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We support the amount of base state aid through twenty-two, twenty-three as presented to forty-eight, forty-six.
Is there a second to that motion? Deena seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Chairman, so that's just, back up on that. That's through twenty-twenty-three. That's exactly what the legislation has approved.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Just wanted clarification.
Any further questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? That motion carries. I guess we're gonna do it one out of it in time.
All right.
Which is different from what I said three minutes ago.
Quite all right. Chair's prerogative, I believe. So supplemental state aid, or the LOB, you see a history of the dollar amounts approved. It's a little different than the general fund. There is a base, but the legislature appropriates a a dollar amount that should cover the needs for school districts when they build their local option budget for state aid. And unlike the general fund, districts raise part of their local option budget locally with property tax, part is provided by the state, and that's determined by a formula based on the wealth of the district, property value wealth. So you see the dollar amount, the dollars that have been appropriated and approved for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, the year you're discussing, are enough to fully fund the formula as outlined in law. So if your intention is to fund the law, the legislature has approved that already.
Okay, so that's consistent with what Michelle just asked, that this has already been approved at this level. So if we want to do this, a motion would be in order to approve the state local option budget. Ann?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move, we approve the twenty-two, twenty-three supplemental state aid of five hundred and thirty-four million, one hundred and ninety thousand.
Is there a second to that motion? Jim, Jim Magnes seconds that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? No. Motion carries. I think we're now to capital improvement.
Capital improvement is also known as bond and interest, probably more commonly known as bond and interest. So this is a state aid when a district passes a bond issue. And again, some districts receive state aid, some do not. Depends on the wealth of the district. And you can see what's happened to the numbers in the, over time, they have increased significantly. Some would say significantly. Until this past year, you see it slowed down in nineteen twenty, and in twenty twenty-one, it actually declined. There are two factors involved in that. One, the smaller factor, probably, there were not a lot of elections in the past year. With COVID and the economic environment we were in, not many districts chose to have a bond election. The other issue, and probably the bigger, is in two thousand fifteen, the legislature changed the formula for providing state aid so that it's, it's, and I won't bore you walking through all the details, other than to say, as a result, right now, a school district that qualifies for state aid receives about thirty-six percent less state aid than they would have if they had their election prior to two thousand fifteen. And that difference, that the thirty-six percent number is increasing each year because of the way the formula's set up. There have been bills introduced each of the last two years in the legislature that would change that and try to close that gap for for bond elections moving forward. They have not passed as of yet. And just for information, we've had questions asked already about how can we address that again in the coming session. So I think it will be an issue again. But that's just information piece. They, it is being funded by law. It's just that the law has changed, so the amount has has decreased.
Mr. Chair, so I, I was thinking that at one time, the state would kick in another, like, twenty-five percent, but now it's down to, what, about fifteen percent or so extra money? Is that in the ballpark?
Depending on the district and the amount they are entitled to, it's, for instance, if a district prior to two thousand fifteen were entitled to fifty percent.
Uh-huh.
Under this formula, they're entitled to fourteen percent.
Oh, that's right. They didn't all get the same support before either, did they? Okay, very good.
Some districts will tell you, I'm saying that backwards. What it means to them is their patrons are paying thirty-six percent more. They have to raise that money locally rather than through state aid.
Once again, this is already appropriated.
This is already appropriated, and it is as the law is written at the moment. So they are funding the law.
I do have, and I don't know whether we want to get into it, but this is something, there's been, the issue is, is Fort Leavenworth.
Yes.
I, I know Deena and I kind of crossed this last session about, do we opine or do we not on that particular piece of legislation when it comes up? Is there a desire, I guess, my question for the board, is there a desire from the board that, or a position with, I'm assuming, would this come with a budget, because this affects the budget, of removing Fort Leavenworth from, from this formula, which would then change the percentages?
Yes.
It would still be prorated, but I don't know if that's where you want to hear later.
We want, that sounds, we can't do that right here.
Right.
But we can, during our legislative priorities, that's something that we need, that I would suggest that we need to address and support.
Don't, we need to see a bill first before we opine on it. I mean, there may be a bill floating around, but who knows what'll happen next year. So when they have a serious bill, then it'd be time, I think, to weigh in, and I think we should.
But at this point, a motion would be in order to approve capital improvement state aid.
I so move.
As presented.
As presented.
Deena seconds that motion. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're moving right through this. Only have forty-eight or fifty more to go.
Done in no time. So that was capital improvement or bond and interest. Capital outlay is the fund that districts use to repair buildings, maintain their facilities, those types of issues. You may hear them talk about an eight mil levy for capital outlay, which districts can adopt up to eight mils, but no more. And again, state aid is on a, on a scale depending on the wealth of the district. You can see for a number of years, it was not funded. That started back when we had the recession nationally, and then was funded at a percentage of the total amount, and for the last several years has been fully funded. So it is being funded by law. The amounts that have been approved for the next two years are, as would be funded by law. This, and I should have mentioned it with bond and interest state aid, bond and interest and capital outlay state aid, both happen automatically. That's not the technically correct term, but the legislature doesn't actually vote, yes, we will fund it, or no, we won't. It was set up in statute so that it comes out of the, the state coffers automatically the appropriate amount.
So this is like everything else we've done so far?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion for capital outlay state aid? Deena?
Well, I don't have any questions about it, but I would like to move that we recommend the allocated amount for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Is there a second to that motion? Ben seconds that motion. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's move on.
Juvenile detention facilities receive state aid. They receive twice the base amount for the students in their care. You will see in twenty twenty-one, the expenditure decreased. COVID impacted those facilities, just like they did virtually everything else in our society. So there were fewer students that could be handled in the detention facilities, so less state aid. The money that's been appropriated for next year and approved for twenty-two, twenty-three will be sufficient to cover what we anticipate to be the number of students that will be served in the juvenile detention facilities. So it is being funded according to law.
Okay, is there a motion? Ben?
I move that we fully, or I move that we fund the juvenile detention facilities as presented.
Is there a second? Jim Magnes seconds the motion. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Now it gets fun.
Little different, perhaps. Special education state aid, first, I apologize. I know we put way too many numbers on one slide here, but there's, there's a lot to the story. So you see state aid in the second column. That's the dollar amount that's appropriated every year by the legislature. And I'll point out that as you go down into the more recent years, it is growing by seven and a half million dollars every year. Legislature's funding seven and a half million. That's a part of that five-year plan that they approved. So for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, you'll see that increase. Then as you move across, the total aid is there because during the recession, we had ARR A money from the federal level that we could include. Other than that, you'll see the same number in both columns. And then excess cost is the part that's in state law. By state law, the legislature funds ninety-two percent of the excess cost. So how much more does it cost to provide special education services? And you can see that percentage is decreasing, even though the legislature is putting more money in. So that tells you the costs are growing faster than seven and a half million dollars a year. It's a one-billion-dollar budget statewide for special education services. So seven and a half million, being a lot to you and me, is point seven-five percent of that budget. So when your, other parts of the budget, general fund, for instance, are growing by three percent, special ed isn't keeping up with that growth. In addition, there are more needs that develop each year, which require more staff. So the short version is, yes, we're putting more money in, but no, it's not keeping up with the increased cost, so our percentage declines. And you see sixty-eight point seven and sixty-five point three projected for the next two years. The ESER funds that you, as a board, approved would go to school districts from ESER I and ESER II, and you see the dollar amounts there, will help. They are not a part of the excess cost calculation, but we thought somebody might want to know. So if they were a part, you can see the percentages. For the next two years, we'd be at seventy point four and sixty-six point seven. So a little bit better than without the funds, but still not advancing to ninety-two very quickly. So that's, that is the dollar amounts. The way the money is distributed to districts is for transportation aid, eighty percent of special education costs, catastrophic aid, which is a bad way to talk about services to students, but that's what's in the law. That's the term. And then the, the remaining amount is divided up based on the number of teachers and paras. And that gives us a categorical aid amount, which is the dollar amount you see there. And you can see that's changed over the years. It goes up and down depending on the appropriation that's been made and depending on the number of teachers and paras. And typically, the number of teachers and paras, paras will increase about two hundred and fifty or so every year. Teachers will increase about a hundred. And most special education directors will tell you it would increase more than that if they could find enough teachers. But that's a shortage area every year. It's a given. But that's typically the increase we see. You see in, in twenty twenty-one, the categorical aid increased fair amount from thirty thousand dollars to thirty-one, four sixty-five. That was due entirely because the number of paras decreased by eleven hundred. Rather than increasing by about two hundred and fifty, we, we dropped eleven hundred. That was not by choice on the school districts part. That was due to workforce and being able to find people who could, who could work during a pandemic and were willing to work. So you, you have fewer individuals to divide into that dollar amount. That leaves more dollars for each teacher or para that you're funding. So the amount of money districts received did not increase over what was appropriated by the legislature. It was just distributed at a higher level per teacher. And then you see our estimates for each of the next two years. Most districts are going to try to bring the number of paras back that they lost, but they have no confidence that they'll necessarily be able to do that, that they will find eleven hundred para professionals, plus the additional teachers they need to have. So that may be, that's just a little background for why you see that number increase like it did this past year. Didn't mean any more money was appropriated, just meant there were fewer people to divide it among. And then, so if we're not funding ninety-two percent as the law requires, and to be fair, there's another component of that, ninety-two percent of excess cost, excess cost is calculated after we subtract out federal aid. So at the federal level, when IDEA was originally passed, the goal was stated as to fund forty percent of that cost. That has not happened at the federal level. Currently, we're at fourteen percent. So it's really... So it's really a two-pronged issue. One is federal level is not funding what they said is their goal, and then the state is not funding ninety-two percent. If the federal funding would be closer to forty percent, our state would be a lot closer to ninety-two percent with the dollar amounts they have. So those two things work in tandem a little bit. When neither one is funded according to law, the services are required, both federally and at the state level. You have to provide these services. So you cannot say as a school district, we don't have enough money, we're not going to provide that special education program this year. Which means it ends up being paid for out of a school district's general fund or local option budget. So those dollars that are intended perhaps for other programs end up going to special education instead. Have I confused anything? So what you see here are options, and we have quite a few of them. So if you'd like, I can run through each of those. I'll answer questions as we go, and then you can tell me what sounds good and what to throw out, I suppose.
Run through the whole thing, and then we'll have questions.
Okay. So one option would be to continue to fund the five-year plan, as it was laid out by the legislature, which would continue to add seven and a half million dollars each year. And you see again then what we project that would do for excess costs, sixty-eight point seven, sixty-five point three in the future years. So stay as we are, is essentially option one. Option two is pick a percentage that you would like to see the state fund, and let's make that our target for 2023. So if you wanted them to, in 2023, stay level, and I'm going to back up for a second. Twenty-twenty-two is sixty-eight point seven. If you wanted them to stay level in 2023, instead of dropping to sixty-five point three, that'll take about twenty-seven million dollars. And you can go down the list to each of those percentages, our estimate of what it would take to hit each of those percentages, until you get to ninety-two percent as outlined by law. And you can see that takes two-hundred-and-twelve point seven million dollars in 2023. And that amount will increase each year, and we'll see why here in just a second. So that would be, get to wherever you want to be in one step. Option three would say two-hundred-and-twelve point seven million is a lot of money at one time. Can we phase that in? So phasing it in over a five-year time period takes about seventy-four million dollars. And if you do the math, five times seventy-four is a lot more than two-hundred-and-twelve million dollars. That's because you have to allow for about a five percent growth in costs every year. So each year you tack on to phase it in, the target gets a little further away. But you do eventually get there, to ninety-two percent after five years. Then we have several options. The question was asked, well, what about a different timeframe, different years? So you can see if we go six years, it takes about sixty-nine million a year. Seven years would be sixty-six million, and would get us there by 2029. Eight years takes us to 2030, and would cost sixty-three point nine million dollars a year. Nine years, sixty-two point five million. And ten years is sixty-one point seven million. And would have us at ninety-two percent by 2032. And I think, yeah, that's the extent of the options that we have here. There are others, and we would certainly be open to suggestions.
So it's like deferred maintenance, you pay now a lot, or you pay a lot more in the future?
That's true.
Okay, watch the thought of the board. Anne?
Thank you. Sorry, you want us to use the hand wavy thingy?
At this point, it doesn't matter.
Well, I know we had talked before about trying to get this done over five years, and we didn't do it because there was a lot of stuff up in the air. But I think now the state's at a point where we ought to make a recommendation on how long it takes to get back to square one, because it was pretty much ignored in the Gannon case and not addressed, and now the legislature's letting it just slip more and more. So I would like to move that we adopt option three to get back to, get to ninety-two percent over five years.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I have Chairman Porter, just have a quick comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We're going to be spending fifteen million on reading, on training teachers in the state of Kansas. That is going to alleviate, in my opinion, it's not going to happen overnight, but we're going to be screening kids, we're going to be hopefully getting them to reading level in first grade and not waiting till third grade. It's going to help with paras, counselors, a lot of excessive things that we spend on special ed, because some kids are labeled special ed because they can't read, and they fall into that category. So I, I'm just going to throw that out there. As far as with the SRR money, that fifteen million is going to be spent on training teachers across the state of Kansas. It's going, I think it's going to help alleviate with a lot of costs in the future. I'm just going to throw that out there as far as money that is going to be spent, that's going to save us costs over the long run. And I'm anxious to see how those numbers look over time, but I just want to, I'm just going to throw that out there right now as far as money being well-spent on training kids to read and not having all these remedial reading resources and things like that, and causing people, as far as I'm concerned, to be labeled under the wrong category and spending a lot of extra dollars. I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
I know this is not a proper procedure, because we don't have a second. By the way, I'm considering seconding the motion. But I'd like to know the thoughts of the board, so maybe we can come to some consensus.
We need to have a motion on the table, then. If not, then my motion dies, and somebody can make another one.
I second it.
Okay.
Okay, the motion has been seconded. Who's seconded? Jim?
Yes.
Okay, did you want to comment, Jim?
We ought to do what we're supposed to do.
Any further discussion of the motion, which is the five-year plan?
I'd like to ask a question. How long ago did the legislature commit to ninety-two percent?
I can't tell you the exact year, but it came out of the Montoy court case. So that would have been four, five, five, six, seven, eight in that era. At one time, I believe it was seventy-eight percent, and then it was eighty-some percent. Eighty-nine point three approximately.
So I think that we need to encourage them to support their law. Their, was it a law, or what was it?
It is a law. The way the law is written, it does say subject to appropriations. So that's why they're allowed to be under the percentage without people running straight to the court. If they don't appropriate enough money, then we have to prorate it and get, which brings the percentage down.
Thank you.
To Anne?
And to Michelle's point, if other things we're doing would reduce the amount we have to spend on special ed, then it will just take less money to get to ninety-two percent, and this amount wouldn't be required. But I think whatever ninety-two percent is, we ought to get there in at least five years. Not, I mean, to say we're going to drag it out to ten is kind of silly. So to Jim's point, we ought to do the right thing.
Are there other comments? Oh, Melanie.
Craig, I was just going to ask for a response on the idea that if we do have more money going into things like reading, how does that affect a budget like this? Where does this money go? I know that's a big answer, but generally speaking.
So that money in terms of SRR funds for a school district would run through their federal funds. They have a fund specifically for federal money, and it runs through there. And so that means then for the district, they're either able to provide a program that they would not otherwise, or they're able to provide a program that we're paying for so they don't have to out of their general fund. So even though the money goes into the federal funds, it may be saving them some general fund money, if that's what you're asking.
I think it is, and that's the theme that I see here, right, is saving the general fund money in the way that we can. Just another quick follow-up on the Montoy comment. I know that when they went back to Montoy last time, that was also adjusted for inflation, and I don't hear you talking about inflation in any of this. Where does that come in?
Because it's ninety-two percent of excess cost, as the cost goes up, you're still covering ninety-two percent. So you're going to pick up that, obviously that last eight percent, you won't pick up the inflation on, but the first ninety-two percent, as it gets more expensive, you keep picking that up.
Thank you.
Jean?
Thank you. I do think this is money well-spent, and I think we need to do it now. These students are some of the most students that we need to focus on in achieving all of our other goals. So I would recommend that that we consider this pretty strongly. I think the five years is a reasonable amount of time, and it gives us a plan to get there. But I know that every year that we don't fully fund this, we've seen we are losing teachers, we're losing paras, and really what we don't track is we're losing students. Students who may have not had that extra attention that they needed. We're federally required to do this, it's the right thing to do, and I think this is a good plan to do this. Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Mr. Porter?
Yes, sir.
This is aspirational, is it not?
Yes.
This is a statement that the board is making about what we want the legislature to do.
That is correct.
And it's to serve students, and I won't want to get into a fight over reading. There may be some who have that, but that is a small minority, as has been stated. These are most vulnerable of our students. And if we send a message to the legislature that it's okay, and they'll say that, oh, the board said it's okay, we don't need to really fund this. We send a message that puts those students who are most vulnerable in peril. We need to stand up and say, yeah, we understand finances and budgets. We know you can't do it tomorrow, but you can do it over the next five years. If that is indeed the responsibility that you have, but if we don't say it, who's going to say it for the students? Thank you.
And just to make sure that people understand where I am, I'm going to support this motion, but I would also have supported doing it in one year. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This goes back to conversation I know I've had with former Superintendent Brungart in his office in Ellsworth, and we talked about that increase in base state aid. There's a good chunk of that that's been going to SPED, because SPED costs have still been going up. But that coverage of the cost of special education's been coming out of the general fund budget, which leaves less money to do other things in your district. This alleviates a lot of the budget stress that superintendents have been under of how do we cover the cost of special education and run our schools? And so with that, I will be supporting this motion to help alleviate stress. I think a five-year is very reasonable to do it, and so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And if you add up the numbers of option four, five, six, and seven, each one gets higher.
Yes.
In the long run, so. Any further comments or discussion? If not, we are ready to vote. Everybody understand the motion? It's that. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Parents as teachers. You see the dollar amounts there historically. CIF is Children's Initiative Fund. TANF is federal money that was used one year to help fund the program. You see a note in eighteen nineteen, prior to that, districts matched sixty-five percent of their own money to the money that was provided through the state. That match was reduced to fifty percent, so it's a fifty-fifty payment. The dollar amount districts receive from us, they match. The funding provides for the program at the levels that it's been requested so far anyway, and has been appropriated accordingly by the legislature to cover costs. So they are covering law.
So this is a like the first things we've done, this is already allocated?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a motion for parents as teachers? Jim McNeese? Is there a second? Ben seconds the motion, and the motion is to approve as allocated, as presented. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Abstention? Nine zero one, thank you. Mentoring?
Mentor-teacher program, as you can imagine, was established in response to research that tells us how important it is to support new teachers, particularly in their first three years of teaching. So the intention of the program is to provide a payment to those teachers who serve as mentors in a district, and they must be trained as mentors before they serve for three years. If the new teacher is here for three years. The dollar amounts, you see the history, for a number of years, it was not funded, then it came back a little bit and a little more. One million, three hundred thousand dollars funds the full cost for first year, to provide mentors for first-year teachers, and a portion of the cost to provide mentors for second-year teachers. It does not provide the cost to cover third-year mentors. Our estimate is that it would take about a million dollars to fully fund the program so that we have mentors provided for each of the first three years that are teachers in the profession. And I would say, I think I can safely say, our school districts would tell you their experience with mentor program bears out the research that's been done nationally as far as the effectiveness for new teachers, as well as the mentor. Most mentors will tell you it's one of the better things they've done in terms of their own training.
Anne, watch the pleasure of the board. Anne?
Well, I agree, and I think we know that what happens the first couple of years, you know, really determines whether or not we're going to keep that teacher and how important mentoring is. So I would move that we fund the mentor-teacher program to fully fund the program with a million additional dollars.
Is there a second to that motion? Melanie seconds that motion? Further discussion? Jim?
At the present time, the number of teachers who are leaving the profession is just scary. The vulnerability of those teachers who are beginning their journey in the profession is in jeopardy. The dollars spent here with the additional million have the potential not just of saving them and keeping them in the profession, but also improving them as individual teachers. Many of you have not been a new teacher. Many of you have not worked with a new teacher. All the support we can give them increases dramatically the success of students, not just the teacher. That's what we're talking about. And the pittance of money that a teacher gets to be a mentor, and the hours that they put in is almost embarrassing. You know, to do a good mentor job, what, they get a thousand dollars for the year? Is that what the teachers get?
Is that right, Greg?
That's awful.
That is correct.
You know. And they stay with these teachers, not for just a year, typically through the whole process. And I applaud those teachers for taking the time to do this, because it's not for the money. They can stand actually and supervise in the cafeteria and make six to seven thousand dollars more a year. You know, so this is not going to make any teacher rich, but it is going to make us richer as educational institutions if we were to do this. So I will vote for this. Thank you.
Further comments? Michelle?
Thank you, Chairman Porter. I do, I have a good friend that has been doing it for fifteen years, and it's very, she enjoys it, it's rewarding for her, and she can see the success over the last fifteen years. So I would be supporting that today. Thank you.
I think the evidence is overwhelming that I think the evidence is overwhelming that it's great for retention and support. I too will support this. Anything else? Not all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right.
Professional development.
Professional development. You see the history on the funding. Wasn't funded for a number of years. And for the last four years, $1.7 million. Nothing has been appropriated for '21, '22, nor approved for '22, '23, so it would not be funded. The way the funding works, school districts are entitled to the lesser of one-half of 1% of their general fund or 50% of their actual costs for professional development. So to clarify one other thing, since you have approved the use of ESTR funds for a number of professional development programs, that money will run through, as we said earlier, federal funds. They have a professional development program that their general fund and LOB can be used to fund other professional development. So what I'm stumbling around to say is they're not going to be double-funded. If they're using ESTR money to pay for a professional development fund, they won't pick up 50% of that in addition as state aid for professional development. That's a separate money trail, and we won't be double-funding them for that training. So this would be for other professional development that the district provides or sends their teachers to, brings in, and so forth. And I just realized on the options, we gave you the option to return to where the funding was, $1.7 million. That funds about 47% of the budget in professional development for school districts. To fully fund it, if I hit the buttons right, would require about $3.6 million.
And watch the pleasure of the board.
I have a question first, Greg. What's the formula they use to distribute it? Is it based on number of teachers or...?
Districts tell us their professional development costs. So then the option for funding is the lesser of, we know their general fund, so it's half of 1% of their general fund, or 50% of their actual costs for professional development.
And that's how it's written in the law?
And there are guidelines for what can be included. Yes, that is in law.
Oh, okay, okay. And if they did that right, it'd be $3.6 million?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah. Well, I think we ought to ask them to fund the law. So I'll move that we fund professional development at $3.6 million.
Is there a second to that motion? Melanie seconds that motion. Any further discussion? C nine? Okay, I'm glad that everybody tries to keep me in order. Takes all, takes everybody, takes the village. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Abstentions? Is that eight, one and one? Okay. Another interesting one coming up.
Transportation. First, the legislature is funding the law as it's written. We, nationally, most people will tell you we have a pretty good transportation formula. The issue is we only pay for students who live two and a half miles or more from school. Very few walk that far to get to school. So the question that comes up typically is, can we shorten that distance? And how much would it cost if we paid for the students that live two miles or more from school? Or one and a half, or one? You pick the number. And I'll tell you, all of our numbers are approximations. This one's maybe a little bigger approximation than some of the others. We don't know for sure. We know about how many kids might live within that distance. So these are somewhat ballpark numbers of what it would cost to shorten that distance and provide state aid to transport more students. And you're probably aware, some districts do this anyway, but they do it at their cost. Or in some districts, they may charge a fee to students who live less than two and a half miles in order to ride the bus to school.
This issue affects different populations differently. You know, in my area, if you live that far away, you're walking on the highway. Or not on the highway, you're walking on a two-lane road. In urban areas, you may be crossing busy streets. So depending on, this is an issue everywhere. The two and a half miles is an issue everywhere. But it's different depending on where you are. And this is a discussion that we have. If we do something other than fund the law, I think that that automatically becomes a legislative priority to support it. So watch the pleasure of the board. Melanie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Craig, do free and reduced lunch students still pay if they're outside of whatever their minimum is?
If you provide transportation for those less than two and a half miles and you charge a fee, in the statute, you cannot charge the fee to students that qualify for free meals.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only fee in statute that is written that way, I believe.
Ann? No, I'm sorry. I see the thing, so I'm going to go your third. Dina, I didn't, I haven't been looking at my hand now. Dina?
I noticed that the state law caps the state aid at 110%. So 10% over would that... That would only cover the 2.0 miles, or we'd start rationing, in a sense. Not rationing necessarily, but...
Stair stepping our way?
If you go over that amount, you have to start subtracting from some people's allocation. So that likely might be done by student, the number of students, or something of that sort. So how would that potentially affect our rural areas if we go over the additional cost, with the additional cost?
Make sure I understand your question. So current law, state aid to a school district is limited to 110% of what you actually spent last year. So if you're spending more to transport your kids, the legislature's going to limit you to 100... They're not going to give you more state aid than you're actually spending. I said that backwards. So if it costs you less than what the formula provides, they don't want to keep giving you money for a service you're not providing. So that's why the 110% is there. So I think what you're asking is if we would put in two miles for next year, would that 110% limit how fast you could grow that $9,250,000? Probably a question for a legislative reviser, but unless they adjusted the 110%, I think the answer would be yes. But you'd have to, as a district, you might have to stair-step your way into that additional money over a series of years.
Thank you.
Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has been an issue since I got on this board. I mean, we have discussed this every single year. And I think this is a real challenge. I mean, you know, that's a long way, you know? So I want to bite the bullet this year. Let's at least try. So therefore, I will make a motion that we request them to decrease the threshold from 2.5 to 2.0. That's a beginning. So that's what I propose.
Now, Ann? No, I told you you'd be next.
Thank you. My only concern is our mantra has been, fund the law, and two and a half miles is the law. And we haven't had any hearings to bring any evidence that would support anything other than that. We'd just be making a swag. And I think we just let the legislature deal with this one. I mean, in my district, a half mile's not safe. There's no sidewalks anywhere. They pick every kid and take them to school, or if they live a block away. So anyway, I think we ought to just leave it at two and a half and let the legislature fight that battle.
We don't yet. Right now, there's no second to the motion. Ben? You're next.
Thank you. I do have a concern, and I share it with Dina, that if we hit that, transportation costs are probably going to increase just because of the cost of fuel and input costs are going up quite considerably. Somebody who just did a car repair earlier this year, I noticed costs are going up for that. Buses are not cheap to maintain or fix when they go down. I have a feeling we'll hit that 10% cap pretty quickly if we lower it down to 2.5. Then we have to prorate everything. I mean, we're guessing. I mean, we haven't hit it yet, but most likely, we're going to have to prorate the transportation, which means less money going to rural districts, which it costs more to transport kids in a way, because they're going more miles to all kids. And so I prefer to stay at the 2.5 miles right now. Thank you.
Betty?
My concern really is different from what's been voiced. There are a lot of now grandparents that are parenting. And you see this more in probably the urban district. I see a lot of concerns on how can I get these kids that I am either guardian or parenting to school? I get a number of phone calls. And when you look particularly at the elementary kids, grandparents or older adults who are parenting trying to walk that distance with their kids because of safety concerns. At some point, instead of punning the responsibility, we are looking at how can we best serve our students? And if we are putting our students first, then their safety when it comes to getting back and forth from school is our issue. I am, I am basically saying, I'm not supporting the law. I am saying we do need to look at decreasing the threshold. And I would be in support of decreasing for that reason.
Did we not get a second, Mr. Chair? Just a point of order? Motion died, okay, so we need a motion now?
Melanie's next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This reminds me a little bit of our conversation around graduation requirements. It makes me curious how far back this goes in time. Because as someone who lives in a densely populated area, I, my kids fit in that last category. We're right at the 1.25, and they would have to essentially cross a highway to get to school. So a big nod to Betty's point about the diversity of the caregivers that we have that are helping these students get to school every day. I think that it is essential that we do something about this. I'm curious, I have a question, and it may be for you, maybe for the board. Has there ever been a discussion about changing this formula so that we're not basing it on miles, but rather the risk that's involved in commuting to school? Do you have to cross a highway? Do you stand on a corner or on a sidewalk versus on a street that doesn't have those? Or are you standing in the gravel? There are a lot of different things that we could discuss as far as how we might factor in the risk factors for a child standing at a bus stop and having to cross streets and walk.
I can say there have been discussions in the legislature about some of those factors. If you've got to cross a railroad, if it's a four-lane street as opposed to a two-lane street, are there sidewalks or not sidewalks? To my knowledge, which is limited, such a bill has not come to the floor of either chamber.
At this time, I would submit that this might be something that we discuss in legislative priorities. But I believe it's still important that we increase this radius. Thank you.
Okay, and I was going to say that, you just beat me to it, you know, that we do need to discuss. This is a real issue. We do need to discuss this during legislative priorities. And Betty, the issue of grandparents raising their kids is not limited to just the urban area. I know that whenever I was the last time superintendent, we had a dinner once a year for grandparents that were raising their kids, and we couldn't find a space big enough to have the meeting. The reason that I didn't second Janet's motion is because I thought she started too quick. Started, I didn't think it was enough. So that's where I am, but I'm not making any motions here. But definitely see this as an issue. And I assume that others will, but regardless of what we do here, I will bring it up again when we have our legislative discussion. Ben?
I move that we fund the current law.
Is there a second to that motion? Michelle seconds that motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Do you have everybody? Okay, thank you, and we'll move forward, and we'll discuss this in a few minutes after a break under legislative priority. That motion passed, yes.
School lunch program. And last year and this year, almost entirely funded federally. The state has $2.5 million in, which is enough to meet the maintenance-of-effort requirements so that we continue to receive the federal dollars. So it is being funded according to law. It is being funded in a manner that continues to bring the federal money in. And this year, as you're probably well aware, all students will eat free again. That's already been determined by USDA. So that's, virtually everything will be funded federally at about, between $4.50 and $4.60 per meal. There are local districts.
So what do we need to do?
They are funding the law as it's written. If you want to support that, you could do so as you have with your other motions.
Okay, so this is already allocated?
Oh, yes, sir.
So a motion being ordered to approve the school lunch as presented. Dina?
I move that we recommend meeting federal maintenance-of-effort requirements with school lunch costs.
Is there a second? Melanie seconds that motion. Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Did you vote, Betty? Was that a yes? Okay, motion carries unanimously. National Board Certification?
National Board Certification is a program of professional development for teachers set out at the national level in law. If a teacher becomes nationally board certified, and it is a rather strenuous process, but very worthwhile for most teachers that have done it, the district will pay the teacher $1,000 each year for the duration of that certification, which is 10 years upon additional, initial certification. The state has paid that funding to school districts. You can see the history there. In '21, '22, it has not been funded, nor is it funded for '22, '23. Districts are still required to cover that cost, to pay the $1,000. They just won't be reimbursed by the state.
Jim, did I miss you before, or is this...
No, no, you didn't miss me.
Okay, go ahead.
But we, and I, thank you for saying, Craig, that districts are fixing this up right now.
Yes.
But they're not incentivized, or is they, it doesn't get any... It's, in the whole scheme of things, reinstating the funding at $360,393. You won't get a bitter bang for your buck out of this. This is a great program. If you're a nationally board-certified teacher, you influence not just your class, but the teachers around you. This is money that is leveraged in the schools. Again, just like mentoring, this is the next, this is the pro level. You're a true pro teacher when you do... And it also sends a message to teachers that we value, that they will do this on their own. And they spend way more money than this on their own to become nationally board certified. You know, if anything, I would love to come back in the near future and say, we could make this a great program in the state of Kansas, because we're really doing, we're just kind of fooling around with it, you know? And I don't mean to take them not serious, it's not a serious issue, but we could, we could do a lot more, and the impact would be well beyond the dollars that we spent. So, if you're looking for a motion, I move that we approve the reinstating the funding for the, at the previous level, $360,693.
Is there a second to that motion? Ben, seconds that motion? Whenever, did you want to second, or do you have a comment?
No, just wanted to make sure, motion was on the table.
Okay. During the brief period between retiring and moving to Kansas, I worked for Professional Development Center and was trained as a mentor for national school, for, for national board certification. I realized as I went through that program and met with some of the people that I couldn't help them. They were all better than I was. And so, I never took on that responsibility because I thought that people that were more competent and better than I was to do that. I have been extremely impressed with the quality of national board certified teachers, the rigor they have to go through, and certainly not everybody makes it. Just because you start that process, you don't make it. Because it is extremely rigorous and seemingly time-consuming, and you have to show results. And you also have to, you automatically become a leader in your school. I will be supporting this.
I have a question to Randy. Randy, I just, I don't recall that we have a national board certification celebration, recognition program. At one time, I remember coming to Topeka, and the national board certified new ones were welcomed, inducted, whatever you want to call it, and others were, come together, and they had a kind of a conference, and that doesn't happen anymore, does it? Or does it? Tell, you know?
We have worked, over the years, we've worked really hard to try to move the needle on national board certification, and it's been extremely difficult in Kansas, and we lag extremely behind in our efforts. I don't know if our, in our efforts, but in, in teachers wanting to do it.
In our results, yeah.
And it's because, in my opinion, and we've got better experts here than me on this, that districts haven't really embraced it as a way in which to move the needle, and I wish that they would. I think you're right. This, be a national board certified teacher is a, it's a big deal because you have to prove you are a great teacher. And that's why, as Ben said, only about half of them that start the process ever finish. It's not a everyone gets it. But I, I stand behind you in trying to figure out a way to get our districts enthused about doing this. But as a superintendent, I worked on it, and early on, we worked on it really hard, and we just couldn't get the numbers up, Jim.
Again, something to look at that would have a far greater impact than the dollars.
Yes.
You know? Thank you.
This is, this is an opportunity for us to value excellence.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Here about 12:15, we're going to take a break.
Pre-K pilot. You see the history of the funding for the pre-K pilot program, and I will tell you, the, this past year, we have reached the threshold where we have as many districts interested as we can fund, and perhaps even more, which is a great place to be. And so, I believe I am correct in saying Melissa Rooker with the Children's Cabinet has a plan for redistribution of the money between several agencies that will help with that cost and help with funding to the districts. And I believe, Peggy, am I right, she's on the agenda in August, to talk to them about what that plan is a little bit, so you'll have a little more information from her about how this will be funded moving forward. The, and you see the dollars there are continuing, some from the Children's Initiative Fund, some from TANF, to give you the total.
This is another thing that's already allocated.
Yes.
Pardon me. Another thing that's already allocated.
That's correct.
Motion in order? Ben?
I move that we fund the pre-K pilot at the current level for FY 2023.
Second? Melanie seconds that motion. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Career and Technical Education Transportation.
And tell you upfront, this is not, this funding is not actually in statute specifically, but it has been funded for a number of years, up until this past year. You see a big increase in 1920. We had some funds that were carried over, and they allowed us to use them for career tech ed transportation so that we could fully fund that program. Prior to that, all those years that it was $650,000, you see the proration percentage, we didn't actually fund the full program. And then, obviously, in 2021 and years moving forward, it has not been funded. But it's not in statute, so I cannot say, I guess, actually, I can say it is being funded according to law, because there is no law that says this is the amount that will be paid. It was developed as a part of what you probably here referred to as Senate Bill 155, and that's the program that pays tuition for students who take courses at technical colleges in career, in approved career and technical education programs. In conjunction with that, the state paid school districts to transport those students to those programs. So, they paid a portion of the cost, and when we say it funds 100%, the amount that, if you fully fund the program, it doesn't cover all the costs of the district in getting the kids to the school, but it covers a good majority of it.
Jim?
In the absence of funding from us?
Yes.
How are districts meeting the challenge or the need?
They provide the transportation anyway and just pay for it on their own out of their current tech ed budget, which really means out of their general fund or local option budget.
And is this a mileage reimbursement for students who are driving their own vehicle, or is it a transportation on, on district vehicles?
Good question. The reimbursement only is provided to districts for their vehicles, and it's a mileage rate. They tell us how many miles they drove each way and total them up for the year, and we reimburse them based on the mileage and based on the vehicle. If it's a larger vehicle, it costs more to drive, the reimbursement's a little more than if it's a smaller vehicle. And as I said, even at full funding, it doesn't typically cover the entire cost, but, because there's a set, a dollar amount per mile, depending on the size of the vehicle. But it is only for school district provided transportation.
Are these transportation services, are they, it sounds like maybe rural, but is it also urban and suburban?
Yes. It doesn't matter where the district is, where their tech center is. If they're transporting kids eight miles one way, they receive reimbursement for a 16-mile round trip, and if they transport them.
So, in Wichita, they're getting money for this?
Yes.
Okay, and?
If they're providing the transportation.
Yeah, if they're providing, and Siblets getting it as well. So, it's not just a rural thing?
No.
It's across the board.
Yes.
And the amount of money that we have up here, again, if we reinstated it for $650,000, is that going to cover all the costs related to transportation for students in the tech programs?
No. In fact, you can see, the most recent year was at $650,000, it covered about 38% of the cost.
So, we're just kind of helping out?
Yes.
And they're going to keep doing it anyway?
Yes. They have, they did last year, 2021, without any funding.
And they get funding for the tech kids as well?
That funding goes to the technical college. The tuition is paid directly to the technical college, and we have no role in that. That goes through K-Bor.
Do they ever help with the transportation?
Not that I'm aware of, but I wouldn't say that doesn't happen. There are some districts that have agreements on costs for the program that they, but they work those out individually with their technical college.
Do private schools have an opportunity to access this as well?
I do not believe so.
Maybe they ought to ask, because I asked in the 1980s and got it.
I, I didn't even know it existed in the 1980s, but, no offense.
No, I don't know if the funding support, but there was, but transportation provided in USD 259.
I see what you're saying, yes.
And to the tech center, and I just asked, and they were, Richard Lad was the director and he's sure.
Okay.
Our kids, sometimes you just got to ask.
Do you happen to know the payment to the tech school for tuition that didn't apply to accredited private schools?
But not, but not everybody is as supportive as you are.
Not everybody's as kind and nice and generous. No, that USD 259 is just really a nice district.
Oh, private.
For Richard Lad.
When the conference is over, Michelle, you're next.
While we're waiting for that, I will say this, Jim. Not having the funding disproportionately hurts rural schools, and here's the reason. Distance, and many rural small schools don't have a tech program in their district, like Olathe, for example. So, if you're in Ashland and you've got to get 60 miles to Dodge City, that's a, that's a, so then it limits those students' access to go. I mean, not that it doesn't in the urban or suburban, but disproportionately, this, I think, affects rural districts.
What we were trying to remember is the issue of paying tuition to vocational or technical colleges, if that applies to accredited private school students? And the answer is, we're not sure. I don't believe it does, but I don't, John's trying to look that up. The mileage, we have not paid accredited private schools mileage to transport students.
Michelle?
Thank you, Chairman Porter. Just had a question about last year, as far as a lot of the tech schools, different ones were shut down. Did we have an idea of, did we save money, or did the, did the rural areas use that money, or does that even, is that how that works? So, like, a lot of the bigger schools and local, they didn't go to the labs, or they didn't go and, and get that instruction? They weren't going to those schools because they were shut down. So, did the rural that kept going, did they use that, utilize that money, or do we even have an idea if we saved money last year?
So, the, the money for, the short answer is, I don't know, but the reason is that money for the tuition flows through the Board of Regents. We don't see that. And then, the mileage wasn't funded, so, yes, the state saved money, but I can't, I wouldn't say that was because we didn't have as many students going. It just wasn't funded in 2021.
Okay. Thank you.
Melanie?
Thank you, Mr. Porter. I think it would be foolish not to fund this on some level. Business and industry have told us that they need these future workers in these programs, and this helps preserve Kansas jobs, and as Randy said, it disproportionately affects our rural areas. So, if I may make a motion?
You may.
And this is, again, aspirational. I would move that the Kansas State Board of Education recommend funding at the 100% level as we did in 2019 and 2020.
Is there a second to that motion? Jim McNeese seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not, we're ready to vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All opposed? Absent. Nine zero one. Thank you.
And before we move on, Michelle, I believe I can find out from Stacy Smith upstairs if numbers were down in students participating in those programs. He may or may not have that information, but I'll, I'll find out. Okay, other programs, discretionary grants. And these, the grants that you're seeing here are for after-school and middle school after-school programs. They've been funded for a number of years. It goes back further than what you see here. We just showed you a few of the years. Typically, at the same amount each year. In 2021, the funding was a little lower, again, because of COVID, participation was a little less in school districts, so the funding was reduced just a little bit. And funding has not been approved or allocated either for the coming year or '22, '23. And because the funding is basically flat every year, and has been for a while, these typically operate in the same districts each year, the, the funding for them does anyway.
And?
So, what programs are these, Craig?
They're funding after-school programs. You see, one is specifically geared towards middle schools, others can be other schools, tend to be, I shouldn't say that, but they're to provide after-school services, not just for education, but might be community-related as well, but they take place at the school.
And this was a big thing for the governor, but she took it out of her budget, right?
I believe that's correct.
She didn't even recommend it?
Yes.
Okay, so, in light of the fact that it's not in the law, the governor didn't recommend it, and it was kind of her thing, and we're spending a lot of money, ESER money, on after school right now, I'd rec, I would move that we do not fund 2023.
I was going to make the same point. This, schools can do this right now through ESER.
Yes.
However, at some point, ESER money runs out, and at that point, we need to reconsider that. Is there, was there a second to that motion? Jim seconds that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Are you voting, Dina? Was that an aye? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Microsoft Office Certification has been in place for a number of years, funding to cover the cost of the assessments.
Wait a second, I, there's, I didn't catch a, Ben, I didn't see your name.
My question was whether districts were using the ESER money on that, which I think they were when I go through it. You answered my question on both ends and all three, and I'm good.
Okay, sorry about missing that. Go ahead.
Okay, so, Microsoft Office Certification, you see in parentheses, Journey Ed Contract. We, we have had a contract to provide that program with Journey Ed, and that's, Microsoft, that's who they basically require us to contract with, and have provided those assessments. You can see numbers from 1920. We don't have numbers yet from 2021. A little over 1,300 students received certification in one area or another of Microsoft Office training. Twenty, that number was 2191 during 1819. And again, COVID impacts that a little bit. We had to, 1920 was the year we, we had to shut down early. So, the governor and legislature both eliminated the funding for this coming year for FY '22. And FY '23, same story, have not funded the program, so we would take recommendations at the board's pleasure.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Seeing nothing, I think this, since this, if you don't mind waiting a few minutes, I think this is an appropriate time to take a 10-minute break. I think this is an appropriate time to take a 10-minute break.
I'd like to promote this type of thing for students. And I think by funding it and allowing them to, to have these fees paid, it would really improve the, the numbers of students who are able to get this. So I think it's probably a very good idea to do this. Thank you.
Anne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're kind of getting into the area of things that are not in the law, but would be nice to do. And so I think unless we have some really strong feelings about it, we might jump over some of these. We don't have to take action on any of them that aren't really in the law. And, because we're gonna have a whole bunch, we're gonna have some we didn't even talk about last month. And so maybe some of these we could kind of go through and if we have real strong feelings, act. But otherwise, leave until the end.
Okay, so what's the feeling of the board related to this?
Ben? I'm sorry, Melanie?
Sorry, I think I had my hand raised around the time that Anne started to comment. I was just gonna say, when, when I look at this particular one, the Journey Ed Contract and the Microsoft Office Certification, I don't necessarily see this as a, as an MVA. This feels antiquated to me, so I'd like to know a little bit more about it. If the enrollment is dropping, I suspect that that may have something to do with access to this type of education. I know that a lot of middle and high schools offer classes that address Microsoft Office-type skills, but not necessarily with a certification. And so I'm, I'm not sure that the certification is really that necessary or beneficial to business and industry. I'd really like to know more about what these students are doing with this certification after they graduate. Is there a way to get to that data?
I can certainly find out.
Is there, what's the, what's our deadline for submission?
When do we turn it in? When in August? Okay, we have to enter the numbers into the state system the middle of August at the latest.
So to get answers to questions like that, we have, you can do most of it.
Yes.
And if there, if there are things that we want to defer so that we can get the answers to those questions, August is not too late.
I believe that would be correct.
Is that acceptable? Okay, let's move ahead.
One thing I'll, I'll back up on just a little bit because it answers a question we were trying to answer for you earlier. John found the statute on the Excel and CTE, which is a program that pays tuition for students to go to, to technical colleges. It does cover private school students as well. So if private school students attend those courses that have been approved, their tuition is paid as well as, as public school. Okay. Juvenile Transitional Crisis Pilot Program happens in Beloit. It's a program that takes place just there where they serve, just as the title indicates. Students who have been in crisis for a variety of reasons. It is a specific program they have developed, serves students in their education cooperative. So it's not limited to Beloit, but it is limited to special education students in their cooperative. Was funded for two years, then not this past year. And funding has been approved for each of the next two years. So in 2223, it has been funded and it's written into the appropriations bill.
So this is another one that's already allocated?
Already allocated, yes, sir.
I'd actually like to recommend we don't take any action on this one. This was kind of the legislature's thing. They didn't ask us. I mean, there are a lot of places around I'd like to do, you mean, it's like a, I don't know what, what you call it. It's just in one place for one group of kids. It's not even statewide, so, or anything they're even trying to scale up. So I'd just recommend we take no action, one way or the other.
If nobody makes a motion, we'll move on. Moving ahead.
Safe and Secure Schools, as you see, began in fiscal year 19. The original funding provided two positions in our agency to help school districts make their buildings, their facilities, their schools safer, as the name would entitle or would imply. And the funding for those positions continues. At the time it was originally passed, it also provided $5 million in grants that school districts would match, dollar for dollar, to upgrade their security systems. Specifically, the, the items that were, were mentioned were around entrances, for the most part. Making your entrances safer. Did that two years in a row, was not funded this past year. And no funding has been appropriated for each of the next two years. So that grant program is not in existence at the moment. And there is no law that requires that funding, I should clarify that.
Has, has anybody been to a school recently that was not secure, did not have secure entrances? Ben? Oh, you were saying yes? Well, that's okay, I wouldn't ask you for that, Anne?
Well, since we already told them we're not funding it, you figure it out, I think we should take no action on this one.
I should clarify one thing. I mentioned it was targeted for primarily entrances. The state board adopted a number of standards around secure schools. For the grants, they just picked the first two standards. There are other areas that money could be applied to, to provide safety, cameras, communication with local law enforcement, a number of different issues. So I didn't want to lead you astray to think it could only, if, if it were funded in the future, it could only be used for entrances.
In the absence of a motion? We'll move on, take no action.
Mental Health Initiative Pilot Program. You see, the history of that funding came into existence for 2018, 19, and the number of USDs. We had nine pilot districts. You just approved the grants yesterday, moving forward into 2122. And the funding for each of the next two years is remaining flat. So we are continuing with the same 56 districts as we've had. School districts can use their ESER funds to help pay for this. So if they wanted to expand the program on their own, if they wanted to add the program on their own, in addition to using their own funds, they could use ESER funds for the next three years to help cover some of this cost because it certainly could be related to COVID and the pandemic. If we want to expand the program as we did for the first three years, to add, depending on the size of the district, 15 to 25 more districts would require about $3 million, which has not been appropriated additional.
Once again, what's the pleasure of the board? Anne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we ought to support this program because we know it's really doing a lot of good. Like Dr. Anderson explained today, the money's being well-used. My only question is, where did the 15 to 25 more come from? Was that just a what-if or do we have schools waiting?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's based on the growth we had in the first three years and prorating that cost. If we added 15 to 25 and we can't narrow it down more than that because it depends on the size of the district, how many liaisons they want to hire and so forth.
Well, did we have district? Well, did we have districts that applied this year but weren't funded?
We did not open it up to other districts this year since we didn't have any additional money. We first asked those who were returning, do you want to stay in? And they all did. So we did not open it up to any new districts.
Well, I think since we said we weren't going to fund it, maybe we just leave it alone, but support the zero. I'm not going to make a motion. I'll let Ben do that if he has one in mind.
Okay, Melanie's next. Oh, was it? I'm trying to look, and I'm trying to see this, and I'm missing one or the other. So let's use the hand, hold the hand things. And so I'll try to keep things in order that way. Are you, was your hand up?
I can hit the button if you want to.
Randy is next.
So in the next several ones of these, these are state-funded programs that originated in many cases like this did in the legislature. If you remember, though, what you approved earlier with the ESER II funds, and of course ESER III is a large amount of that money is going to social emotional programming in these districts and other, as Dr. Anderson said. And so when the legislatures, and we'll talk about this later, said, why don't the State Board fund this, our thought was, it is being funded by the local districts with the, over 90% of the money that we flow through us. So that's probably, I don't know about the 56 because we didn't survey them in particular, but my guess is, if they wanted to expand programming, they certainly had the funds to do so. Through 24.
Ben?
I guess I'll bite the bullet. Because I do have people asking, and it's, I've had a lot of districts utilize this program a lot. So I move that we vote to expand the program with an additional $3 million.
Is there a second to that motion? Anne seconds that motion. Further discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. I think I'll vote for it. Yeah. All opposed? Two, three, four. That's got a six-four.
I don't know. I'm sorry, wait a minute.
I believe the motion carried six to four. Is that correct, Peggy? Okay, let's move ahead. Anne?
Thank you. I don't know if there's an opportunity to make a statement about them. I mean, we did refuse to fund this out of ESER money, but I think it's important to understand that the reason was, they should fund it, and our money's only temporary. And this is a program that needs to stay permanently in place and not let them, you know, push it off to somebody else, because we know it's a really good, much-needed program. So I don't know if there's a way to make a statement about that, or even if we want to. But they may wonder, well, gosh, if you guys wanted it so bad, why didn't you fund it? And I think it's because they need to, it was their idea. They need to keep it and grow it the way it should be.
That's fine with me. Go ahead.
Okay. ACT and Work Keys Assessment. We have a new contract with ACT to provide that assessment. You may recall through legislative action this past session, accredited non-public school students can now participate in this program as well. The, a little unusual on this one, I'll try to explain some differences. The contract is written as though every student would take the assessment, which is the $3,332,500 you see in FY23. So the appropriation is $2,800,000, which doesn't cover the full contract. Well, not every student takes the assessments, and ACT bills us once they know how many students have actually taken it. So they bill us for the actual number rather than for the full amount. They write the contract for the full amount, just in case everybody would happen to take it at some point in time. So that's why you see a discrepancy in those numbers. And to cover the full contract, if it would happen to work out that way, would take an additional $532,500. I will tell you that so far, our bill on an annual basis has not hit the $2,800,000 mark, but we don't know that that would be the case, obviously, in the future.
So that would be aspirational.
I believe that would be a safe statement.
We may not need it.
Yes, sir.
Would, could we say it's likely that we will not need it this year?
Based on the numbers we've seen, you may know better. Odds are pretty good, $2,800 would be enough. Is that a safe statement?
Unless there's a motion, we'll move ahead. I see none. Let's move ahead. Dina?
I, I move that for fiscal year 2023 that we fund the anticipated increase to the ACT contract of $532,500.
Is there a second to that motion? Jim Magnie seconds that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion fails. We need to, Peggy needs to identify the no's. You got it?
Great. Statewide Dyslexia Coordinator. You've heard about this a number of times by now. Legislative Task Force recommended it in 1920 and '21. State Board has agreed, and you earlier approved the use of ESER funds from our administrative funding to fund this position for the coming year. But since you're talking about FY23, the question is, how should that fund, or should that position be funded moving forward?
The Dyslexia Task Force made a whole lot of recommendations. Every recommendation to the State Board of Education has been implemented. Every funding recommendation to the legislature has been ignored. Therefore, I move that we request the $100,000 for a dyslexia coordinator position. Melanie seconds that motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? That happens unanimously. That didn't require a whole lot of discussion.
Thought it might not. Communities and Schools. Program to support students and prevent dropouts. You can see some history on funding. In addition to this, there is funding outside of the State General Fund that flows through our budget to them, $50,000 a year. They have requested $100,000. It has not been funded by the legislature. You can see it has not been funded for a number of years. 1314 and 1415, it was, for $250,000 each year, but since then, no funding has been provided. And you do see funding from TANF funds, from the DCF, that supports communities and schools. And this was another program, since you mentioned it, that was suggested by the legislature you use ESER funds to fund.
Okay. I remind everybody to try to, Ben? Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next three items, looking ahead, is KC, KFAK, and Communities and Schools. Historically, and I think Janet could probably speak to this better, but we have traditionally kind of requested the same amount of funding for all three organizations in the past, as I recall, and based on the conversation. And then we haven't for the last couple of years. And so I, I'd like us to resume that. So I move that we approve a request of funding of Communities and Schools of $35,000. I know, it's not what's on the page, but I'm recommending $35,000 for each of the next, for Communities. I guess, I don't want to go make it on one motion. I guess I could. One motion for all three? Well, we haven't gotten to the other two on the slideshow.
I'll, we will accept if you can get a second.
Okay.
Any motion you make.
Okay. I move that we approve $35,000 each for Communities and Schools, KENS Association for Conservation of Environmental Education, and KENS Foundation for Agriculture in the Classroom. That $35,000 each.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Dina? Oh, okay, Anne. I got you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Problem I see, these come from different places, the funding for these. The, well, we're just asking the legislature to straight-out fund the environmental education and ag in the classroom, and I think they should. They used to. It's an ag state. We ought to do that. But the Communities and Schools, we're asking to be funded out of the Family and Children Investment Fund. Well, they get that from, I'm not sure what all comes out of the Family and Children Investment Fund. And if we gave Communities and Schools $50,000, I mean, how much is in that fund and what else comes out of it? And is somebody going to get cut short if we take $50,000 out for Communities and Schools?
No one will be cut short. That $50,000 has happened every year for, how many, for a very long time, 20 years. So that is a standing expenditure.
For Communities and Schools?
Yes.
But we didn't do it the last couple of years, right?
This is a separate State General Fund allocation. The $50,000 comes from another source. It just happens to flow through us, and we cut the check to them.
But we didn't do it for the last couple of years, few years, right?
You haven't done this State General Fund appropriate. So there's two pieces. The $50,000 has happened every year, and then in addition, you have asked at various times for $35,000 or $40,000 out of State General Fund. So the $50,000 has continued to happen. The 35 or 40 is what you see the history on here.
Well, I thought when the Communities and Schools people called me, they said, we used to give them a grant out of our money, and then we stopped doing that. That's what they told me.
I believe they're referring to what you're looking at right here, the State General Fund.
The SGF. So the motion on the table is to take the money?
It's 35 for NSGF, 35 for all of them, leaving the $50,000 alone.
Yeah, the $50,000. It's confusing because you see $50,000 here, which happens to match the amount, but that's a different $50,000.
That we need to approve, or it won't happen?
No, that's all, that's whole separate. That's not State General Fund money. It's not something that the State Board approves or does not approve.
Okay, because it's not clear from what we're looking at. So you're recommending the legislature fund $35,000 for Communities and Schools?
And KC and KFAK each.
Okay. Well, I remember when I, and I told these guys this the other day, that one of the things that, when I was in the legislature, Communities and Schools came in and said, you know, here we are. And one of the things that impressed us was, they said, we're not going to ask for any money from the state. We're totally privately funded. And we said, great, go forth and do. And in some communities here, like in Topeka, Our United Way was the first one to bring them in because we had good work for them to do. So I'm kind of torn on this one, especially since they've got the ESER money to do the same thing. But anyway, that's it, for what it's worth.
Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, they told me exactly the same thing, Anne, and I forgot to ask that question. They told me that they, that they got it from a grant from the department. You know, that's exactly what they told me also. However, I would, I stated the other day, I just want to clarify what I stated. I stated that we re-recommended funding for all three, and then we quit doing it. We, well, then Communities and Schools kind of went out on their own and got funding, and the rest of them were dropped. And what happened was, we didn't stop requesting it until the lawsuit came in. And that's when we said, just fund the law. We didn't ask for that. But Communities and Schools kind of broke away and did their own thing. However, I will support this. This will be back to where, because we had agreed at that time, that we, when times could work out all right, that we could go back and at least make the recommendations for these three. So therefore, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Melanie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be supporting this as well. I just want to remind everyone that we had speakers yesterday morning from KC and from KFAK. And one of the reasons that I am very interested in supporting these two organizations in addition to CIS is that they provide, at least KC I know provides micro credentialing for teachers as well. And that's generally at no or low cost to the teachers, and they're active across the entire state. So if you reference your notes from yesterday morning, there's a little bit more information in your packet, but I will be supporting this as well. Thank you.
You may speak.
Thank you. I'm sorry. The one thing that I'd like to say is, this is, this requires matching funds. Each of these groups will have to match the funding if we're able to get it. Thank you.
Is there something in the law that says they have to?
That was always my understanding when we did it before, that they had to be, have, they had to provide matching funds. Is that, I don't know?
They have always provided matching funds from private sources.
Okay.
So it's not the school district that matches.
For Communities and Schools as well?
Yeah, for this, for this amount, yes.
This amount here. Anything we asked for had required matching funds. I don't know about the others, about what they've done with the others. All I can tell you is, these, what we requested, required matching funds.
Because, I mean, their budget is like, they, I was going to say, they get $2.6 million from DCF anyway, right?
Yes.
So this
I don't believe there's any matching.
This small amount that we're talking about really only helps them with their backend stuff, so.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion to fund these, to request funds for these three programs, please raise your hand. All opposed? Abstentions? I believe that was, was that unanimous? Okay, unanimous.
That finishes already, Mr. Chair.
No, it doesn't.
I stand corrected.
I'm going to throw in a mucky wrench. And I'm going, and I have no idea what the opinion of the board will be, but I've been concerned that for the last number of years, now, we can only talk about the Department of Education, but this is going to put us in a broader context that we may not want to go here. But I'm going to at least bring it up for discussion. The board, the employees of our agency for the last, have infrequently had salary increases over the past decade. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, sir.
And would it be an accurate statement that we have people that have been here for a decade or more that make less than $15 an hour?
I believe that's correct.
Do we want to ask for some, now, we can't ask, it would be inappropriate, I think, for us to say, just fund state employees at this level. Do we want to address that? Anne?
I think it ought to be in our legislative priorities rather than our budget.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Mr. Porter?
Yes, sir.
The conversation that you just had with Craig was, you know, kind of a little vague. Do we need to have a report that tells us more precisely what the issues are before we? we move forward? I agree with the whole thing, and I'm not doing this to delay or, but to more accurately understand the situation.
Well, yeah, I'm not ready to make a motion-
Okay.
-on this, you know, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. I think perhaps, as Ann said, the appropriate place to put it was in our legislative priorities, and so our liaisons in that case can support that.
I was thinking a little more broadly about a possible subcommittee of some kind that would study the issue and bring it back to us.
Well, I think we can get a history from our historian over there.
Or from staff.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm looking at is, I agree with the concept, I'd like to have a more quantitative than qualitative view of it.
So can we have a report next month about the history of that-
Certainly, yes.
-so that we can have further discussion? What other information do we need?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we ought to know how many Department of Ed employees would qualify for food stamps or TANF. I know at one time, trying to think the last time I debated that on the floor, there were 1,500 state employees who qualified for food stamps or TANF.
I don't think we can get that information legally because it's based on family income. And while I may know what our employee makes, I don't know what their spouses make, nor do I have the right to know that.
Trying to think if there's another way to kind of get at it. Let me ask you this, how many make less than 15 bucks an hour? That'd be a good place to start.
Yeah, let's have that sort of information, and then continue this discussion later. Sorry I brought that up, but I think that's important. We need to value our employees, and this is a way that we can, by advocating for them, however we decide to do it, we are making, we are making a statement. And I believe you're the next agenda item also. Okay.
I would like to ask if we could have information on basically comparable salaries of people who, well, let me just say, I guess I should say something. It's my understanding, I've always understood, that our employees can make a whole lot more money working for a local district than they can in the department. They're all underpaid, I mean, here in the department. And I was wondering if we could get some type of information on that of comparable, I mean, not every single employee, but I mean, something that we could kind of judge a little bit on that, because that's always been a concern of mine. Thank you.
So I guess we have a future agenda item, but it needs to be a near future.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item seven, I believe it is.
And I believe you have a copy of a letter. And the purpose of that letter, in the legislation that was passed that funded school districts, and this is a review, we've talked about this in prior months, but in the legislation that was passed, the recommendation from the legislature was that the State Board would use ESER funds to fund $5 million for Safe and Secure School Grants that you just discussed, the 3.4 million, I want to say, for Mental Health Initiative, and $100,000 for communities and schools. And the language was, if the board believes that those things can be funded with ESER money, if not, then we need to send a letter to the Division of Budget and to the Legislative Research Department to let them know that they will not be funded with ESER funds, those three programs. So what you have is a letter outlining the issues, and just briefly, Safe and Secure Schools doesn't fit under ESER. The way that they defined it was to provide safe entrances to your schools. Well, that really doesn't have to do with ESER, that's making it safe from intruders. It doesn't have to do with COVID, that's making it safe from intruders. The mental health, certainly you could use ESER funds to assist with mental health. We've told school districts that, they can use their ESER funds for that. Communities and schools, their programming is to assist efforts to lower dropouts or keep more students in school. You can make an argument that that would apply. When they asked for money from the legislature, their comments were that it was to continue the programming that they're already providing, rather than doing something new necessarily related to COVID. So that could be questioned one way or the other. But the overriding issue is, that law was passed and signed into law in May after you, as a board, had already identified how your ESER funds were going to be spent. So in essence, you had already spent the funds that they were asking you to spend on these three programs.
And correct me if I'm wrong in this, the ESER money was given to, and the authority to spend that money was given to state Departments of Education, not the legislature?
That is correct.
So it is ultimately our responsibility to fund those programs? I mean, is it our responsibility to determine the funding for ESER?
That's correct. The language in the federal act specifically speaks to the State Education Agency, which in Kansas is the State Board of Education, having the authority to determine how that 10% set aside administrative funds are allocated.
And I'm going to move briefly into item eight to say that I think I can say reasonably well for all of my colleagues here, that we would love to have a dialogue with the legislature and discuss their priorities prior to decision-making being made, and we might even be able to accommodate some things. But we have responsibilities, and we need to be at the table when those things are being discussed, as opposed to things being imposed upon us whenever we are the ones with the authority to do that. Is that an accurate statement? Hate to put you on the spot. No, I don't. That's a lie.
I would say yes, but your comments were about "we," which I thought would apply to the State Board, not to me.
Okay. Well, yeah, you're right. You pivoted well.
Thank you. Seventeen years as a superintendent, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I believe that we are, we welcome the opportunity to collaborate. I know that every time I've testified, which has not been that much, I have ended every time I've testified before any committee with an open invitation for cooperation. And actually have been called a time or two. When I work with dyslexia about that, but otherwise not. And so I, but I think that we need to always be open and willing to have open, positive discussions, but as equals, as opposed to having to address things. And we're going to get to that later on. Okay. Are there any comments, discussions, or a motion to approve this letter?
I move to approve the letter.
Ann moves to that the Kansas State Board of Education approved the proposed response letter from KSDE Division of Physical and Administrative Services explaining federal requirements to the Division of Budget and Legislative Research on expenditures of federal COVID-19 relief funds. That's exactly what you said, right, Ann? Is there a second to that motion, Jim? Make me seconds that motion. Ann? Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Abstained? Nine zero one. Okay. We are on a timeframe, so we will probably not get through everything we wanted to do here. We will, about 20 minutes after 12, wherever we are, we will pause, we'll take a break because we have a 12:30 news conference. And I would like to start this discussion with our update from our attorney.
Chairman Porter and the board, the subject on item eight is to discuss legislative priorities and stakeholder engagement. My goal, as directed by the chair, was to provide an update, or not really an update because there's not any new necessarily case law in this area, but to summarize the power and authority of the Kansas State Board of Education. Some of this will be a repeat from what we discussed less formally in June, and this memorandum is for you to have, to reflect on in the future as issues come up, and will serve as a basis for research memo in the event that we have a specific piece of legislation to be examined. As I've mentioned before, specific statute or independent board action will need to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis to see if it is consistent with constitutional mandates as interpreted by case law. And some of this is a kind of a revisit or refresher as you take a deeper dive into the legislative priorities, not only establishing what the board wants to promote, but also what the board wants to be involved with in that cooperative fashion that the chair discusses and refers to. And sometimes we talk about what are the options in the event that the cooperative effort is not necessarily effective and legislation becomes law that we don't necessarily agree with. I'm not going to go into those options we have, I've distributed previously legal memorandums on what are some of those various options, and once again, we look at what those are on a case-by-case basis related to a specific, specific piece of legislation or an independent action that the board might want to take. The memorandum, I'll just briefly or loosely follow the format of the legal memorandum, and just remind you that the education article was passed in 1966, effective in 1969. And that education article says, and I'll read it because it's important to break it down and use that as the springboard for the remainder of the discussion. The education article, Article Six, Section 2A of the Kansas Constitution says, quote, "The legislature shall provide for a State Board of Education, which shall have general supervision of public schools, educational institutions, and all the educational interests of the state, except educational functions delegated by law to the State Board of Regents. The State Board of Education shall perform such other duties as may be provided by law." You know, when you look at that and dissect it, it really looks to me like there's three different parts in concept, that it provides a balance between the State Board and the legislature. It highlights the various influences, and it does put some limitations, even though later I'll talk about the self-executing of power and the constitutional authority of the State Board. It certainly highlights the fact that the State Board is not autonomous, and so there is inherent within the language, the expectation that there will be influencers on this, on the general supervision, because it starts out that the legislature shall provide for the State Board of Education. So even says that at the inception, the State Board is, the impetus is from the legislature. And so when you dissect that, you look at the various entities that provide some influence into what are the legal and constitutional parameters of the authority of the State Board. Now, we know that five areas have been decided definitively in terms of prior case law. What I've described in the past as within the clear bullseye of the target of what is the mission or what's within the purview of the State Board, and that is statewide accreditation, certification of teachers and schools, licensing of school personnel, establishment of minimum curriculum and graduation requirements. What's uncertain is what's next, because these cases, the cases that interpret that were really mostly, there's been some in recent years, but most of these cases came up in the late, you know, 1969, several in 1973, late '79, and, you know, really the last 20 to 25 years of case law has all been on school finance and not really legal challenge to various, you know, various authority of the State Board, if you will. Of course, there has been, there have been a few, but they have not necessarily defined the new parameters. So later in the memo, I talk about the COPE, C-O-P-E, that was at the federal court that was in 2014. We didn't discuss it too much, but it reinforced that, you know, the curriculum, that the board sets the minimum curriculum standards, and then the local boards make the decision as to what would be carried out. So the question is, what's next in terms of what either falls within the bullseye or is, you know, at least within the target, and what's outside the target? And it occurs to me that the conversation you had just a moment ago on dyslexia would be something that is very topical. It wasn't, certainly wasn't contemplated in 1969 when the Constitution was, you know, was implemented. It's something that hasn't been necessarily discussed until, you know, within the last five years approximately. And I think that's a good, just a example of how you break apart the two concepts of dyslexia as it relates to the division of authority and policymaking between the board and the legislature. For example, it was described in the debate today that the policy and task force recommendations were implemented by the legislature, however, the funding was not. But as we know from the, you know, from the constitutional provisions, that funding is the primary authority of the legislature. So that would be, as the current status is, we might have a complaint about whether or not it has been funded, but that falls in the lap of the legislature to fund those particular provisions, and that's the entire dialogue you had today with regard to budget recommendations. It also occurs to me that funding would be broken down into two subparts. One would be creating the funding that, you know, through state dollars, through funding mechanisms, and the second would be whether or not the legislature could control the use of funds that come from other sources, for example, federal funds, or dictate, you know, whether or not certain policies, or certain funds would be used for educational purposes. And so you get into the issue of what is, what do the courts say about the education article, and what does, you know, what does it really mean when applied to a specific state? situation? The Kansas Supreme Court first commented about the education article in 1973 stating that Article Six bestowed broad supervising powers in the state board. Then later, in the Board of Education, State Exrel Miller case in 1973, the court interpreted that authority as something more than to advise and confer and something less than control. So once again, we have our extreme boundaries, but we don't, it doesn't really provide the kind of specificity that you'd ask, does this, you know, is this within our bailiwick? Is this something that we should individually or solely govern in terms of the educational interests of the state? Moving forward on the outline, we know that school finance is the obligation of the legislature. We've addressed those cases in Montoy and Gannon, and I'm not, I'm not going to revisit those. We also have a component of the Constitution that mandates local control. And the Kansas Supreme Court has interpreted the state board's general supervision in the context of local control, indicating that, you know, there's not a, the supervision is not to mandate what the local schools do, but they provide advice. And I think that's evident in the more recent conversations related to curriculum and minimum standards and establishing the kinds of policy and competencies that you would establish for schools in the state of Kansas, but not, but falling short in terms of particularly mandating or requiring certain things. You also think about the fact that the, where you compare and contrast the language of the education article as it relates to the state board and compare it to higher education, because the language is much less absolute as it relates to higher education. The question many times that's asked is, what does it mean to have self-executing authority? And the Attorney General opinions and case law have interpreted that to mean that the state board may regulate such educational matters without reliance on legislative action. So on educational matters that are within the purview of the state board, you do not need to wait for separate legislative action to give you the authority for that power to spring forward. You can certainly rely on the legislature to have implementing authority, to provide some guidance through legislation, but you need no supplemental legislation to make the decisions of the board effective as long as they are consistent with the constitutional commands with regard to the general supervision and the areas that are within the state board's authority. The authority that's provided by the legislature must be, and I'm looking now at some of the case law that interprets that on page four, talks about the fact that the legislature doesn't necessarily, it doesn't have to be hands-off. It can be in the same, in some of the same topic areas, but the action must be in harmony with and not in derogation of the authorities. So we look at whether it, whether what the legislature is doing is complementing or competing with or taking away or detracting from the policy decisions that the state board has. So it kind of goes back to that, the notion of cooperation, but the question becomes, you know, is what the legislature, is the law that they've passed? And so going back to just the most recent example, for example, perhaps dyslexia, is the statute in harmony or is the law in harmony with what's being proposed or being discussed by the state board? Or is it in derogation? Does it take away from those core powers that the state board has?
So if, for instance, we are now looking at graduation requirements, a comprehensive review of graduation requirements. If graduation requirements became part of the legislative branch, I would interpret, would I be correct in interpreting that would be not in harmony with what we're doing?
The lawyerly answer would be, it certainly depends on the specifics that are required, but I would say that the case law would, and the interpretations would be that graduation requirements would be, would be the authority of the state board, and that would flow down to the local, you know, that they would set those minimums and that the local school boards would implement them, but that if the state of Kansas through the legislature was trying to dictate those graduation requirements, and they were not in harmony with what the state board considered to be the essential graduation, minimum essential graduation requirements, then I would say, yes, that a particular statute or a particular directive by the legislature might be in derogation of or in conflict with the authority of the state board, and then it might lead to some of those potential challenges that we've The other portions of the memo go through and highlight some of the other cases that have been involved and talk about how the court interpreted those. For example, in 1998, the USD 443, the court looked at whether or not it was consistent with this division of power for the state board to approve inter-local agreements between local school districts to provide for education of exceptional children. And the court looked at that. I think that one of the citations from that case, I think is important, is to point out why it's, some of the advice is fuzzy in terms of the ability to determine with some clarity or precision, because the courts have said that the state board is going to exercise some quasi-legit legislative and quasi-judicial, you know, powers in adopting rules and regulations. And so therefore, you're wearing multiple hats depending on the, depending on the nature of the issue. Later in 1992, in the Hainline case, the Supreme Court discussed the board's ability to cancel teachers' certificate. On page seven, I described the federal cases that are influential and are of more recent origin. And midway through, the Kansas Federal Court, I think, did a really nice job of highlighting the distinction and in fact said, "It is imperative to understand the role that the board plays and does not play as a matter of Kansas law." And it goes through the Kansas Constitution, and then in there it says, "Kansas law requires the board to establish curriculum standards for local public schools, but also prohibits the board from impinging upon any district's authority to determine its own curriculum." And that was not only a Kansas federal court case, but it went to the Tenth Circuit on appeal, and Scott and the others were involved in that case, and the Attorney General on behalf of the state board and the Commissioner and the Department of Education. And the board, excuse me, the Court of Appeals in 2016 concluded that in the area of establishing the framework for standards, they do not bind local public schools. And so drew the line in the sand, saying, you know, respecting the local control, talking about establishing those minimum curriculum standards. And so that's a recent case that I think is important. The Attorney General opinion that we have addressed in 2019 was one that at the board level, we analyzed and discussed as it related to background checks of teachers. And we, on a deep dive of that AG opinion, while at the outset, we had some concerns about the language in that opinion, the takeaway is that the Attorney General was of the opinion that the, that in the specific statute that was being questioned, the legislation was in harmony with the authority of the state board. So therefore, even though we might consider it to be the legislature doing something that should be really left to the decision of the board, at least in that Attorney General opinion, it was found that the statute that required the background checks was in harmony with, and so therefore, you have that sense of dual authority between the legislature and the state board. And so it wasn't something that would be set aside. So I realize you set a time limit, so I'm going to just wrap up and reinforce that the general supervision most appropriately includes such matters as accreditation of schools, certification of school personnel, establishment of minimum curriculum and graduation requirements. And beyond that, we'd have to look at whether or not the specific case falls within something that's been tried and true and tested already, or whether or not it falls within either the authority of the state board, the authority of the legislature, or a combination thereof. I'd be happy to answer any questions or just help participate in the discussion.
So as we move forward, we, of course, need to wait until there may be an issue, but preemptively, this is really not a legal opinion, but preemptively, it would be in our best interest to try to establish better relationships and understanding. We don't have to answer that, that's not a lawyer thing, but, Anne.
Thank you. Mark, can the legislature, the Attorney General hang their hat on Section One as their wedge into areas that we would otherwise have authority over?
And by the way, I didn't point out, but I did attach the specific provisions, the last two pages of the memo. And so Section One, Schools and Related Institution Activities, "The legislature shall provide for intellectual, educational, vocational, and scientific improvement by establishing and maintaining public schools, educational institutions, and related activities which may be organized and changed in such manner as may be provided by law." And so certainly, they do establish, or they do rely on that. And I think that that was the, essentially, the Rose, some of the Rose standards, which look to that that is the connection between how school finance was developed, which was that the legislature would engage in a balancing act of those specific elements in driving what they considered to be important, the educational, intellectual, vocational, scientific improvements. And those Rose standards was what came out of the litigation to, for the court to scrutinize where the legislature decided to spend its money.
Yeah. I did find it interesting, Section One and the section on funding both state pretty clearly that the legislature's job is to fund and take care of public schools, not private schools, but they keep trying to get around it.
What is being passed around now is the updated or revised letter after several of your comments. There was, there are two changes. One is in paragraph number four that makes it, one of the board members thought that some of it was a little aggressive, which is, I don't think that's the right term, but there's been some changes there. And another one that referenced, because it is being criticized by some culturally responsive was removed, because that has a wide interpretation and is on some people's radar as critical race theory. So we didn't want to, we wanted to make sure that what we said would be as accurate as possible. So please take a few minutes to read this. We can wordsmith all day. We need, everything's a, everything that's effective is a compromise. If you are generally comfortable, this will have more force if we can approve it.
Mr. Chair, if we just have a grammatical correction, just want us to bring that later?
No, tell Denise.
Okay. I'll tell Denise.
If you're comfortable with something, can somebody make a motion that we approve this with the corrections? Jim?
First, I'll make a statement. This is an excellent approach to a very interesting situation. I would hope, but I doubt, that it will have the appropriate impact or as good an impact as I think it should. It states our case well. Those that think we're just fake news are not going to take it well. They'll find lots wrong with it. But as a board right now, in this situation, under these circumstances, I think it's appropriate that we move forward with it. So if you're looking for a motion, I move that we accept. The Kansas State Board of Education response to critical race theory claims is presented and forward that to interested parties as directed.
Will you add with corrections?
With any editorial corrections, but not changing the message within, included in the letter.
Betty, Betty seconds that motion. Melanie?
Thank you, Mr. Porter. This letter has changed, in my opinion, this has changed significantly since the draft that we received yesterday. I think that there's an important piece that's been, that was in paragraph three and has been left out, and I'm concerned that the letter does not specifically address that we recognize as a board that there is going to be continually a need for culturally relevant teaching and educational equity. I see the educational equity piece here, but I feel that this letter is not strong enough on what it is that we're saying we want to keep in classrooms. And I preferred the first draft.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to speak to a little bit of the history of this. I've received, I'm confident that you have also many emails and many phone calls regarding critical race theory. And I go back to many years ago, probably over 10. I was a speaker at the NAACP State Convention. And at that convention, I spoke naturally on education. And when we got into the discussion time, I was told that they were not pleased with our history standards. You know, they did not include enough African-American history in them. Okay? And so I said, well, I will definitely take that to the department and see what we can do. And fortunately, we were reviewing history like in the next year, and we were able to get several more African-American people on the committee. And subsequent to then, we have always included, we've had at least one more review of it, maybe two, I don't know, since that happened. And subsequent to that, I haven't received no complaints from the African-American community. They seem to be satisfied that we are including, you know, as much as possible in our standards. So I think, I guess what I'm saying is, they're not in, they're not in our standards. They're not in our standards. That's the number one thing I have to tell everyone. They're not in our standards. And so therefore, I think some people are getting frantic, trying, getting upset about something that doesn't exist in Kansas. I cannot speak to the rest of the United States. I could speak only to Kansas. But we do not have this problem. But I recognize it is very, very prominent right now. So therefore, this letter is definitely necessary. Thank you.
Michelle?
Thank you, Chairman Porter. Yeah, I agree with, as far as with the letter coming from the state board, it's not in our standards. I do realize that over COVID, we didn't, we didn't even know a lot of times when, which schools were in session full time. I mean, we just, we didn't, we weren't able to, you know, know every single thing about every single district that's out there, because there are many teaching different things. There's, you know, private schools and virtual schools and charter schools. And I just want parents to be aware that it may, as it may not be in our standards, you still have to pay attention to the curriculum that's coming home with your child, as you should be anyway. If you're concerned about a book, or if you're concerned, you have the option to opt out. They don't have to read that book. They can discuss it with their teacher and choose another book. I just want parents to be more aware, if they're concerned about something, they need to address it locally. And that's what you're, it's where you have a principal, an assistant principal, you have teachers. We did something similar at Blue Valley Southwest. We came up with a parent committee and talked to the principal about some things that were concerning to some parents in the district, and we took care of it locally. It can be done. That's why you have people right there within a few miles of your school to take care of certain things. If you have issues, I want to make that clear, so you don't have to drive 1,000 miles to, you know, to the next closest person that represents you. You have people that represent you locally for a reason. And that curriculum can be anywhere from Eddie Eagle, you know, talking about gun safety, or whatever they choose. If it's more rural, if they want to do that, that is a local decision, and those should be handled locally. So I'm glad they're not in our standards. But as far as what's being taught out in the districts, pay attention locally as a parent, and get involved in your school, get involved in the PTO, get involved in whatever, be involved in what's going on in your local school. And you'll have more control, because it's right there in your backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. See, no more. Ann?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I agree with what Melanie said, because they're dragging culturally relevant pedagogy into the argument, too. Like, we shouldn't even be trying to make history or any class relevant. And I just wondered if you were considering making a substitute motion?
How would I go about doing that?
You want me to give it a swing?
There can be an amendment to the motion.
You can actually make, our rules allow for a substitute motion, it would sound like. I make a substitute motion to keep the second letter, except for the third paragraph, which I'd like to take from the first letter.
The motion's been made in second. But there is a provision in Roberts, if we don't use that. There is a provision for amending the motion.
In that case, I'd like to amend the motion made by Mr. McNeese, and replace the, basically replace this updated second draft and return to the first draft.
I'll do that with discussion.
So is there a second to the amendment? Are you second to the amendment, Dina? Ann seconds the? Okay. So this is the process that we will use. We will discuss the amendment. Then we will vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes, then we will have to vote on the entire process as amended. If the amendment does not pass, then we'll go back and vote on the original motion. The amendment comes first. Dina? Let me, we are nine minutes away from a press conference. We will, as a matter of fact, what we're going to do now is that we are not going to continue. We're going to take a break, the conference, and after the, after the press conference is over, we're going to come back and finish this discussion. Huh? I can take a recess anytime. Yeah. But the motion, you know, the motion's still there. But we have to be, we have press coming in in eight minutes. And then we can come back. How long do we anticipate the press conference will last? 15 or 20 minutes. So let's take.
Does anybody else need a copy of the first one?
Anybody else?
Besides me? Oh, okay, I've got yesterday's.
Okay, we're gonna be in recess for seven minutes.
Process that we're going to follow. We have a motion on the floor that has been made and seconded. We have an amendment to that motion on the floor that has been made and seconded. We are now going to discuss the amendment. After we discuss the amendment, we will vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes, we will vote then on the amendment, the motion as amended. If the motion fail, if the amendment fails, we will vote on the motion as presented. I want to at this time apologize to the legislative liaisons who were prepared for this, for the part of the meeting that we're not going to get to, and ask that when we meet next month, that there be significant time giving for the legislative liaison and legislative report because it's getting to the point where we need to make some decisions and make them.
Look at that writing.
Beg you'll write it down, you can get that. And I believe as we were leaving, Deena had the floor. You have the floor, Deena.
Thank you. The reason I asked for the deletion of that sentence has to do with an item that was presented at the Manhattan School District by their particular employees. And I'd hope that we could deal with this a little more quietly. But since we're doing it this way, I will tell you the reason. This was sent to me by the Chair of the Riley County Republican Party, which I'm assuming that this is probably out amongst everyone who happens to be in the leadership of the county Republican Party. Here are the things that they, and this is culturally responsive teaching and learning. And this is the program that they were projecting and is offered by a company. The terms I think you will hear, you will understand why maybe I thought we didn't need to have this, have people saying you don't know what's culturally responsive teaching is because our definition isn't even close to what the definition here is. It talks about dominance of white normality. It talks about teaching, and this is adults, they would be teaching. But the fact that learning is included, it would be, the intent would be that it would be passed on to students. Systemic racism. And that has to do with how our curriculum and behavior management systems have been shaped by systemic racism. Bias and privilege. Self reflecting and using our power for change. Culturally responsive teaching. Moving from awareness to action. I didn't think we wanted to use those terms in our letter. But that's what this teaching is. So I thought it was better for us to leave the cultural responsive teaching component out. So I'm responsible for asking that that be removed, that statement. Because I did not want to see this board being accused of either hiding things or being non knowledgeable of what cultural responsible teaching, what I thought it was and the definitions I've seen, do not include these kinds of terms. But obviously, companies have started using the things that are more related to cultural races, the racism theory. So I'm, I'm just going to ask that we be very careful. Thank you.
Thank you, Deena. Well said. Deena brought up a number of issues, but I'd like to put it in a little different framework. This is a, a topic that just isn't going to go away. And in a letter that we're going to explain on critical race theory is not part of our standards and system, is not a good time to talk about other issues that are important. So the, I think taking that, what Deena and the group has recommended out of the letter is a wise decision to deal with the issue as it is right now as opposed to, that could be more explosive than the other stuff. You know, to get our position out, I think that other statement will cloud the position and they'll miss it. Quite frankly, you know, because of a response. Every, every word in this letter is going to be scrutinized very closely by those who I don't probably agree with. Okay, but at the same time, I'm going to fight one fight at a time, not multiple fights. So that's why I will support the letter as, as not amended, but my original motion. Yes, motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to remind the board that years ago, we already supported culturally relevant pedagogy. When Akala and Nguyen, the representatives and Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Akala came and asked for our support in doing the teacher training, the teach the teacher on culturally relevant pedagogy over at Washburn U, we hardly gave them our support. So we were already on the record as supporting culturally relevant pedagogy. And the reason we did that was remember there was a bill in the legislature to make every school teach culturally relevant pedagogy. And we said, come to us, we'll deal with it. They did and we did. And I know that they, they're not doing the training this summer, but I believe they're planning on doing the train, the trainer stuff again next year. They have, have money left over. But the fact is that the people who are, who don't understand what culturally relevant, what CRT is, don't know what culturally relevant pedagogy is anyway. And they are getting them mixed up. And I think we do need to address it because the bills that we're seeing come out across the country, and I have no reason to believe ours won't be just as bad or worse. They're conflating everything altogether. And I think it's important that we make the distinction. Culturally relevant teaching and educational equity are not critical race theory. And I think we need to be real clear about it and because they're going to conflate them all. It's already a political thing. I mean, I can't explain why the Riley County Republicans don't have a clue what any of this stuff is. But it's just going to be a fake culture war that they're drumming up for next year. And like Jim said, it's not going away. They're, they plan to beat the drum on this through November 2022. But I think in terms of protecting what our schools are able to teach, it's important to, to make a distinction between culturally relevant teaching and educational equity and CRT because they are different. Don't try to drag them all in together. So I'll be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Betty. Okay. There's a lot going on with this and it is unfortunate that we're trying to put the existence of racism under critical race theory as though this is novel and this is new. And it's not. I have personal opinions of all of this, but I sit on a board. And this board was elected to represent everyone. That's not just African Americans. That's not just whites. That's not just Asians. It's everyone that exists here in Kansas. We were elected to be the voice of the people. Now, yes, there are many that refuse to look at the elephant in the room. Is there systemic racism? Yes, there is. Do we have problems with one race feeling empowered or one race feeling less? Yes, we do. Will that solution be founded in a statement for the board? No, it won't. But that's not the point. The point is from a critical race theory in terms of, of being this bomb that was created a few weeks ago and is now ready to explode, what is our position? I don't want to suggest that we have fixed everything in the state of Kansas because we have not. And that's not the point. That's not what we are looking at. Michelle brought up a good point when she said, there's a process in place. If we are concerned about those issues, there's a process in place that we follow, which is going to your local boards, making sure that they are aware of what your feelings are. And that same thing holds true from us as a state board. There's a process in place. So yes, we are looking for some very generic statements. Yes, we are looking at some very general statements. Those general statements are being made for the simple reason that how can you reflect those needs of everyone? If the, if the statements are not general. My point being when we looked at this, yes, we were looking at some things that would make all Kansans feel like their views are valued. Some things seem to weigh in a little more heavily than others. But once again, we as a board, as elected representatives, and I am trying to take a step back from personal points and just say, our goal is to let people know, number one, we recognize that changes need to be made. They're going to always need to be made, just as we were discussing earlier. What we do today may not be relevant five years from now. It may be something totally different. But we do need a statement for today. And I am just encouraging all of us to try and look at what is best for our students because that's what we were elected to do. And that's what I feel is a strong position for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. I, Ann and I were the two people on the board that first met about the cultural responsive pedagogy. I strongly support culturally relevant pedagogy. I think it's extremely important. But I think the term, as it has been misinterpreted by the people that Deena talked about, clouds the issue. And so I will not support the amendment for that reason. I'm not trying to influence anybody else. Everybody, you know, I, and however, anybody else votes is up to them, just like always. So, but that's going to be my position. Are there further comments? At this point, we're going to vote for the amendment. The amendment is to add the statement that was in the original letter about culturally relevant teaching. Does everybody understand the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. All opposed to the amendment, please raise your hand. The amendment is not passed. And at this point, we will discuss, or vote, depending on your option, the, the, the original motion. And Ann. All in favor, okay, I see no questions. All in favor of the original motion, please raise your hand. The, the letter that was presented, just, just that. Okay, all opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are adjourned.